I gave him a dollar. Go to Spangles, they're like really cheap there. And now they have the fireball, right?
One minute.
So I keep checking my phone, but I guess it'll be okay, it's not that much text or anything.
When do you have an extra pen? Apparently I misplaced mine.
I don't.
Pencil.
Don't let me lose your special match.
Thank you. That way if I make some notes, I can erase them.
Thirty seconds. You ready?
We ready to call the meeting? Okay, thank you. About twenty seconds, everybody.
Ten, nine, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here and welcome to the Wednesday, February twenty-second meeting of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. Thank you for all those that are watching on KPTS and YouTube and our other social media channels. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. Next item, please. Pastor, is Pastor Refner here? Okay, all right. We'll do a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please. Present. Present. Next item, please. Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. I am Nicole Gibbs of the Strategic Communications Department. First on our list today, I have Julie Stimson of Emergency Management here to talk to you about the upcoming ribbon cutting they have scheduled about their sirens. Julie?
Morning, Julie.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Julie Stimson, Sedgwick County Emergency Management. As Jonathan and I mentioned a couple of weeks ago during our two-two-ones, Emergency Management has a special event coming up on Saturday, March fourth at the Sedgwick County Fire Station thirty-two in Park City. At ten a.m. we will cut the ribbon, so to speak, on the oldest operating Thunderbolt siren in the world. We will honor two public servants who shaped our outdoor warning system as we know it today, as well as highlight the importance of disaster response volunteers from past to present. We may even have a surprise or two to help kick off National Severe Weather Preparedness Week, which begins that following Monday. Our local media partners will be helping us promote this special event in the coming weeks, and we hope you all can join us. And any questions?
Okay, very good. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. I just want to let you know that we are having some technical difficulties with Facebook, but we are still broadcasting on YouTube, so just so that you're aware. For county good news, the Strategic Communications Department in partnership with our DEI fellow has been highlighting Black and African-American employees on our social media feeds in honor of Black History Month. The team has compiled a video highlighting employees that we will show you now.
History is something that we all need to know, because if you don't know where you came from, you're not going to know where you're going or where you should go.
It was painful at first to find out what type of history we had before we came, but the one thing that I like about Black History Month is that it shows all the accomplishments we made from our struggle from slavery to now. For me to be able to sit here in the office.
I'm very grateful for all the predecessors who fought for the Black community. Like, an example, MLK, without him, I maybe not even have this job. I may not even be in the U.S.
We need to learn Black history to go with our everyday world history.
My mother, she used to make us remember the Martin Luther Keynes, "I Have a Dream" speech. And part of that reason for that was so that we would never let it go far from our mind that our struggle were going to be different from her struggle when she was a child growing up and being African-American.
In my family, we try to focus each week on researching someone that has been influential. We also research different, like, cultural foods, so we try to have different foods each Sunday of the month of February.
I served twenty-three years in the Air Force. I've had tremendous success in both careers, the one that I'm starting now and the one that I finished. And I believe, I wholeheartedly believe that if you want to move forward in life, you have to know where you come from.
Very good.
Special thanks to those that participated and to those that put this together. We, Strategic Communications, will be continuing uplifting diversity, equity, and inclusion stories throughout the year. Last call for nominations for the Excellence in Public Service Awards. It recognizes employees from the city of Wichita, Sedgwick County, and Wichita Public Schools who exhibit the highest standard of service. The nomination process closes this Friday, February twenty-fourth, at five p.m. To learn more or submit your nomination, visit sedgwickcounty.org. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments? I don't see any. Thank you, Nicole, as always. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we did not receive any emails by the five o'clock deadline yesterday, so we will move on to the public agenda. We do have a number of people that have signed up for public comment. Some of them, I understand, are here to talk about a zoning case. Does anybody want to address the commission right now under the public comment section, or prefer to assume there's a preference to wait? So anybody in the audience wants to address this, please come forward. Okay, we will hold off on the public comment. I mean, we will close the public comment. So, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, regular meeting minutes of February first, 2023.
Commissioners, you received a copy of the minutes of February first. Are there any corrections, additions, or comments? Being none, I'll make a motion to approve. There's a motion and a second. Being no comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Next item, please.
Retirements, item B, recognition of employees retiring from Sedgwick County.
Sheena, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. In 2023, we are going to start the process of recognizing all our retirees at the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Today, we have two retirees that we want to acknowledge for their retirement. They are not in attendance today, but we want to make sure that everyone is aware of their accomplishment. Cherie Jones is an ISO officer in our Department of Corrections and will be retiring February twenty-fourth after twenty-three years of service. And Lisa Price, a detention deputy in the sheriff's office, will retire February twenty-fourth after twenty-seven years of service.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Congratulations to them. We need a motion to receive and file. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments, item C, accept the resignation of Luke Sponsel from the Third District Citizens' Advisory Board.
Hey, Mr. Papun.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. I'm going to be jumping around a little bit on appointments to group some of them, so I hope you can stay with me. If it's the will of the board, I would like to handle item C, E, F, and H all at once. They're all resignations. Item C is resignation of Luke Sponsel, Commissioner Dennis's cab appointment. Item E is the resignation of Chad Childs from the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. Item F is the resignation of Karen Countryman-Rosworm from the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board. And item H is the resignation of Tashima Owens Council from the County Commission's appointment from the Sedgwick County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board. I'd ask that you accept all the resignations.
Okay. We have a question from Commissioner Dennis.
I don't really have a question. What I want to do is recognize Luke Sponsel. He's served on my Citizens Advisory Board for quite some time. He started a different job, and it's going to take away most of his time. So I sincerely want to thank Luke for his service on the Citizens Advisory Board. And I don't know if anyone else wants to make comments, so we'll make a motion.
Okay. Is it okay with the commission that we loop all four of these together? And I think it is, so if you want to make...
Thank you. I make a motion that we accept the resignations as identified by our County Counselor.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept the four resignations. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. So we've C, E, F, and H are... We're on the next item, please.
Item D, resolution appointing Stephanie Wise to the Sedgwick County Third District Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Papun.
Mr. Chairman, this is the appointment of Stephanie Wise by Commissioner Dennis to be on his Third District Citizens Advisory Board. Resolutions in proper form, ask that you approve the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. We're turning on and off our switches at the same time, unfortunately. Anyway, first of all, Stephanie is here. We appreciate very much her volunteering to serve. She and I met over coffee one morning to discuss Sedgwick County. She's going to be a great addition to my Citizens Advisory Board. We actually have one coming up here very shortly, so we'll see her, our first one. And I want to thank her for her service. With that, I make a motion that we approve Stephanie Wise to my Citizens Advisory Board.
And I will second that. That is a very good appointment. That's a very wise appointment. Okay. Any other comments? Sorry. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Congratulations. She can be sworn in. Stephanie?
Good morning, Commissioners. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Third District Citizens Advisory Board. So help me guide.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for letting me serve. I'm really excited to sit on the board, learn more, and get more involved in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. You'll do a great job. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, resolution appointing Daniel Bateman to the Sedgwick County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board.
Again, Mr. Papun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'm going to group some together here. All five of these appointments that I'm going to recommend are appointments to the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board. This is a seventeen-member board, and the County Commission gets five general appointments to this board. These are all on the recommendations of the Corrections Director, Steve Stonehouse, and we'll be looking at items G, I, J, K, and L together. Item G is a resolution appointing Daniel Bateman to this board. Item I is the resolution appointing Joseph Hamilton to the board. J is a resolution reappointing Kristen Peterman to the board. Item K is a resolution reappointing Terry Moses to the board. And item L is a resolution appointing Tiffany Irving to the board. All the resolutions are in proper form, and ask that you approve the resolutions.
Okay. Any questions? That's a good group of appointees. A lot of us are familiar with some of those members, and thank you for agreeing to serve. With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. And some are here to be sworn in. Anybody that's here, please? See Daniel?
I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board. So help me guide.
I do.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for serving. If you want to say anything?
Thank you very much. I appreciate this and look forward to serving.
Thank you.
It's something I'm very passionate about and really, really happy to be on this board.
Very good. Thank you very much. It's an important board, too, so we appreciate your appointment to this board. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item M, resolution appointing Becky Springer to the Sedgwick County Community Corrections Advisory Board at large position.
Okay, Mr. Papun.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, again, County Counselor. This is the Community Corrections Advisory Board, and the resolution that's been prepared is a resolution appointing Becky Springer to this board. This is an at-large, happens to be an at-large appointment to the board by the County Commission and is on the advice, again, of the Department of Corrections Director, Steve Stonehouse. The resolution's proper form, ask that you approve the resolution.
Okay. Are there any questions about this appointment? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve Becky Springer to this board.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Is Becky here in the audience? Oh, yeah. Thank you. There you are.
Please raise your right hand. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Community Corrections Advisory Board. So help me guide.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for willing to serve. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item N, resolution appointing Bob Aldrich to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission.
Mr. Papun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Commissioner Beatty's appointment to the MAPC, obviously a very important appointment for county commissioners. Commissioner Beatty is recommending the appointment of Bob Aldrich to this board. He will be replacing Suzie Cunningham, an appointment of a former county commissioner of the Fourth District. Ask that you approve the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to... Bob, I appreciate you being willing to do this. Bob lives in an area and has extensive experience in some of the areas of our county where I envision some significant development happening. And so I asked Bob if he'd be willing to serve in this capacity. His insight's going to be very valuable moving forward, and he agreed to do so, and we appreciate you, Bob. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Bob Aldrich to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission.
I will second that. Bob, I'm glad you're willing to serve. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay. Good morning, Bob.
Good morning. All right, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Wichita-Sedgwick County Metropolitan Area Planning Committees. So help me guide.
I do. You got it right.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your trust and confidence.
So, thanks again, Bob. It's an important position, and we appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item O, resolution reappointing Clement T. Dickerson to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee in the unincorporated position number four.
Mr. Papun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, we can take items O and P together. These are two appointments to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee. This is a sixteen-member board, which has a number of specialized appointments. The first appointment resolution is Clement T. Dickerson, who is being recommended by Environmental Resources Director Susan Erlinwein. He fills a position for the member from the unincorporated area of the county. And item P is a resolution reappointing Tony Martinez to this board. And this is an appointment. Each commissioner gets an individual appointment as well. This is the appointment by Commissioner Sarah Lopez to this board. We'd ask that you approve the resolutions appointing Mr. Dickerson and Mr. Martinez to this board.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to thank both Clem and Tony for wanting to be reappointed to this board and for all the work that they do on it. So I will make a motion that we approve both of these appointments.
I'll second it. Okay. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Are they in the audience? Either one of them? Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item Q, resolution reappointing Levonta Williams to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Okay, Mr. Papun.
Mr. Chairman, last appointment is appointment by Commissioner Beatty again. This appointment is to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. Each commissioner gets three appointments to this board. Commissioner Beatty is recommending that Levonta Williams be appointed to this board. We have a resolution prepared, proper form, ask that you approve the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Levonta, I just want to appreciate you so much. You and your family has served this community now for multiple generations, and we're grateful. We're grateful for your insight. We're grateful for your willingness to serve. And when you and I met and we talked through some of these things and some of these community issues, I just want you to know that you do a lot. You do a significant lot in this community, and I want you to know that we see it and we appreciate you, and I'm grateful that you're willing to serve in this capacity. So I'd like to make a motion, reappointing Levonta Williams to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Is Levonta Williams in the audience? Levonta, I enjoyed serving with you a number of years, and I'm glad that Commissioner Beatty has recognized you to serve. So thank you for our friendship as well.
Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. So help me guide.
I just want to say thank you, Commissioner Beatty and the rest of the Commissioners, for the opportunity to continue to serve and to make the best decisions for a very vulnerable group of people in our Wichita community. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Levonta. You'll do a great job. Before we move on, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. We've had a number of appointments and resignations today, and with all the people in the audience, I want them to know that there are still a lot of positions that are open currently that they can apply for. I have an opening on the Solid Waste Management Committee, the Aging Advisory Committee, and the Animal Control Board. So I know all the Commissioners have a few openings here and there. They can go on our website and apply for those, and we certainly appreciate the service for our community on the boards. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a great reminder. And again, they can go to our website and see all the positions in all the boards, what they do and what they serve, and their schedules and everything else. So thanks for that comment. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business, item R, greater Wichita partnership update.
Good morning, Mr. Fleur. Jeff Fleur.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. My name is Jeff Fleur, President of the Great Wichita Partnership, 505 East Douglas Avenue, right down the street from you this morning. I'm actually joined this morning by one of our Board of Director members, Scott Swineman. Y'all know Scott very well. Scott works with us in a number of different ways, and so he's actually our first emeritus director. And so again, it's a way to continue to have incredible leadership in our community, helping shape decisions and move our communities. So Scott, thank you for being here. Evan Rosell from our team is also here, and Evan works with us in a lot of capacities, as you know as well, and working with him and leading the partnership. On behalf of the board, we do want to thank you for your partnership. It is one that goes back to when the partnership actually was created in 2015. You have been with us every step of the way to really, how is it we maximize opportunities and create new ones at the same time? You helped us in creating the Regional Growth Plan, which addresses seven industry sectors of opportunity for our community, our region. We've seen great opportunities there. Over 12,500 primary jobs have been created through the partnership, working with companies to do that. In our pipeline, it's the strongest ever. We have ADA projects that could render another 12,000 jobs. So again, we're seeing great opportunities, working with you in that realization. In capital investment, which is the built environment, so this is when you have buildings being constructed, infrastructure, we've seen over 2.6 billion since 2015, and that number continues to grow. So again, that's the built environment. That's not going anywhere. That is a part of our fabric as we go forward. Over 600 million has been generated in annual payroll. So think about individuals earning more, individuals stepping into a first-time job for individuals and families. So that's new generational wealth, if you will, that's coming into our community. So over 600 million has been generated since 2015. In addition to expansions of local companies, we're also seeing attraction of companies. And for communities, that's always, that can be a big hurdle. So one of the things that we've seen of late is that we've seen Novoco's come into our community. We've seen Millennial, Bell Flight, also Nomadix. Two, three of these are actually cybersecurity. Nomadix is a global company, and they actually have now named Wichita their global headquarters, coming out of Santa Barbara. So again, great movement there as we continue to go forward. And as you know, we're working on an APEX project right now in the semiconductor realm, which will render 2,600 jobs and an investment approaching $2 billion. So again, through focused vision, understanding where we want to go, things of this nature are happening. So with all these jobs being created, we understand talent has to be a part of our cultivation as well, both in the pipeline and attracting talent into our community. So one of the things that you partnered with us just recently was a talent roadmap, working with Deloitte. As we were coming through COVID, we knew things were going to be changing with workforce. AI, digitalization, we're really, really being impacting all of our industry sectors. So you stepped in with us. We hired Deloitte. They gave us a really good lens on where we're going with jobs of the future. We're working with companies right now to see how those future jobs are actually starting to evolve and emerge today, so that we can work with education to make sure that we're making that pipeline as strong as we can. With attraction to talent, we're working with the state and DCI. You've heard us talk about DCI a lot. They help us position who we are as a city, as a region, when companies are looking to attract talent. People understand the company, they need to understand the community that they're being asked to come into as well, or to stay. Where is it going? So that work is helping in that regard. You've heard a lot of tech layoffs across the country as of late. Just FYI, within the last ten days, we have reached out to 1,500 of those individuals coast to coast to let them know about jobs here in Wichita. We have openings, but they don't know about it unless we reach out to them. So that's being done. We'll circle back with you to let you know how effective that outreach is being. But again, attraction of talent is critically important as we go forward as well. The last item in talent is that you remember that WSU with the Build Back Better program was just awarded one of the largest grants in the country, $51.4 million, to really help with smart manufacturing with small to medium-sized companies. So again, I know Commissioner Lopez was really involved with that, and so we appreciate her leadership, because again, it landed something really incredible for our community in a number of ways, working with WSU. The last area I'll talk about briefly is quality of place, and I'm so glad that Levonta is here, because Levonta and you go back to those early days of 2009, 2010, when we really were working on Project Downtown, actually what brought us into this community, to work on that. Since that plan's adopted... Since that plan's adoption in 2010, the arena's a big part of this equation. We have had over $1.6 billion, again, let that sink in, $1.6 billion of investment, private and public, in our downtown. Our pipeline now is approaching and actually exceeding a half a billion dollars, the largest that we've ever had in our community. So, we've, in that time, actually built 1,500 residential units, new residential units, doubling the base of our downtown. We started at like 1,400, so we've doubled it. We're now positioned to double it again. And so, we do market research to understand those numbers, and they're real. And if you go to looking for an apartment right now in downtown, in some properties, you're going to be on a waiting list. So, very high occupancy, very high demand. The other part that we're working on is that because this investment has been made, there's a lot of discussion about the Wichita Biomedical Campus, which is a partnership between WSU, KU, WSU Tech. Again, an unprecedented opportunity to develop medical research in our downtown, not unlike what you're seeing in Phoenix, not unlike what you've seen down in the Texas Medical Center. In fact, when you talk to WSU, KU, they envision that this campus could grow to a population of 12,000 people. That can happen in a short period of time. To equate that, that's another spirit, Aerosystems, in our community. So, again, incredible opportunity that if we had not been doing what we have, we really wouldn't be positioned for that. But today, we are. So, you're dealing with an incredible opportunity with Biomed and also semiconductors at the same time. So, I think a great demonstration that our community understands who we are, our assets, both in talent, capital, and how do we leverage. And so, we're working diligently with you to make that happen. So, in closing, I know with your consideration today of continuing your investment in the partnership, it's critical. I think that when you have the private sector aligned and then also working with the public sector, that's an important equation that needs to work. And it is working. The private sector, just as a point of reference, in 2015 was investing about $1 million annually. That now will shift up to $2.4 million this year. So, and from '15 to right now, it has increased $1.4 million in annual investment. So, you look at the investment that you're being requested to consider today of $400,000, we will leverage it right out of the bat six times just in moving it forward. We'll do more than that as we continue to move the projects. And we'll give you more numbers about that as we continue to move forward. So, on behalf of the board, on behalf of our team, thank you for the opportunity to work with your staff. They help us incredibly. You help us. A number of you are engaged in various ways. We want to be able to do that even more so as we go forward. But again, thank you for your investment, for your consideration today. And as you heard at our annual meeting, we all build Wichita. We all have opportunities to step into that. So, again, thank you for the opportunity for me to be able to give you a few remarks this morning.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there any comments, questions? I think Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you. And I'm a strong supporter of GWP. Government couldn't do this alone. We have to have the private sector that's involved in our community to help us with the growth. The accomplishments in the last few years have been astronomical. So, if we tried to do this in-house, we'd fall flat. Even though we've got a great staff, we couldn't do everything that you're able to do while working with the private sector. So, I want to thank you very much because I think it is a very valuable way for us to contribute to this progress in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you so much for being here today. It really is exciting to see how the public and private partnership works together so well. Every time I get to hear you speak or come to your office and hear everything that you guys are doing, I always walk away just so excited because the momentum is clearly building. I mean, so much is happening, and I'm a huge supporter of all the work that you guys are doing. So, thank you again for coming and being here. I think it's clear that you're going to have our support going forward again. But I just hope you know how much we all appreciate the work that you do because, like Commissioner Dennis said, we couldn't do it without you. So, the momentum is there. You guys are a huge part of that, and just want to thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Howe.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I listened to Wichita yesterday make also glowing comments. And I agree with everything they said in the previous comments today here. But we do need to have a strong economic development arm, and you guys do a great job. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Beatty.
Yeah, fortunately, I get to speak with you and your team quite frequently. And I'll echo what Commissioner Lopez said. It's impressive. It's not impressive that you just have talented people that work at GWP, but the strategy and the plan and the capacity to communicate that plan to this community. And I think the proof's in the pudding, frankly. I think the return on the investment that this community is seeing from what you're doing, I would say that the investment that this commission makes into, that this county makes into GWP is one of the soundest investments that I think we make because of the return that we get back on this investment. So, bravo to your team. I'm encouraged to work alongside you guys, and let's keep going. Let's keep our foot on the gas.
Appreciate that, sir. Thank you.
And Jeff, just a couple of comments in that, thank you for sharing those numbers. They are real numbers, and they are impressive numbers and big numbers.
Yes, sir.
And I remember 2015, leading into 2015, Councilmember Levonta and I, remember, and I think maybe Commissioner Howe was on board right about that time. And it was kind of a risky time because we really didn't know what our community was doing. And we came together as the city and the county to help seed the initial part of this and put all the economic development under one roof as a joint effort. And I tell you, it's just been one of the better risks that we took back then that it's proven out hugely, even to the point where yesterday I was in Topeka and with the chamber, and they had presentations from Speaker Dan Hawkins and President Ty Masterson and Lieutenant Governor David Tolan, who's speaking on behalf of the Kansas Chamber. And every one of them spoke highly of this area, what's going on, mentioned GWP's efforts. And it was just really rewarding to sit in the audience and listen to our state leadership talk about how great this area, the Greater Wichita area in Cedric County and actually the whole region is doing, in large part to you all, in large part. So, my sincere thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that, sir.
Okay. This item is a receive and file. So, I will make a motion to receive and file the presentation.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item S, Consideration of a Three-Year Funding Agreement with the Greater Wichita Partnership.
Okay. Good morning, Brent.
Good morning, Chairman Meitzner. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. This item is the consideration of a three-year funding agreement between Cedric County and the Greater Wichita Partnership. Funding agreement is a three-year agreement, beginning on the date the agreement is signed. It ends December 31st of 2025. It contains two two-year options to renew under the same terms and conditions as contained in the agreement. The annual funding of $400,000 to the Greater Wichita Partnership would come from the Budget Authority in the Economic Development Fund. It calls for two $200,000 payments annually, one in January, one in July. And this contract mirrors and aligns Cedric County's agreement with the partnership to that that was approved by the City of Wichita yesterday, approved unanimously by City Council. It basically continues the same level of collaboration and funding support that we've enjoyed with the partnership over the last few years. And you've all spoken to the macro benefits, and they were explained by Mr. Fleur a little bit ago. But I would just tell you, as that staff person with a lot of contact with the partnership, the micro benefits to this organization. If we were to try and do some of the administrative things that the partnership does in terms of request for proposal, I don't know how many staff people we would need. So, that in and of itself makes us a sound investment, let alone the returns to the greater community and the greater region. So, at this time, I would recommend approval of the funding agreement and authorize the chairman to sign. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Brent. Are there any questions? I'll just comment that I appreciate our partner, used to say across the street, but our partners, the City of Wichita, supporting this in equal segments of what is in front of us. So, thank you to the City Council and for their endorsement and approval of this. Any other questions? I think we had our comments previously. So, I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item T, ZON 2022-00069, Zone Change Request in the County from SF20 Single Family Residential to TF3 Two-Family Residential and MF18 Multi-Family Residential for duplexes and multifamily residences generally located on the northeast corner of North 135th Street West and West Central Avenue.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Normally, at this point in time, we would each declare ex parte contact and declare that we were able to make a decision, even though we've had ex parte contact. However, in my role as County Commissioner, I hereby recuse myself from the discussion, consideration, and vote on any action regarding the present item, joining case 2022-00069. I have a personal connection to the item that constitutes a conflict of interest. As I am within the notice area, I am the president of my homeowner's association. My wife and I have filed a protest petition. And once I learned that I was in the notification area, I immediately notified the agent that I would recuse myself from this decision. In addition, during the Citizens Advisory Board meeting, I notified everyone in the room that I would not participate in any discussions, and I would recuse myself from voting on this proposal. I have received numerous emails inviting me to meetings with other homeowners' association, which I declined. And I have received numerous emails from concerned citizens, and I advised each of them that I have to recuse myself from this decision. At this time, I will withdraw from the bench prior to the presentation and consideration of this item. I have not attempted to use my position as a county commissioner to influence the decisions of my fellow commissioners. I acknowledge that it is their duty to keep an open mind and consider the information being provided today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dennis. That is a, that doesn't happen very often. I think that's a first in my career. So, but I think that's the right thing. So, Commissioner Howe.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I have two things. Number one, I have received, I think, substantial ex parte communication. I've received countless emails. I don't have any idea how many. I've perused them all. I have not read them carefully. I think nearly all of them, if not all of them, are in opposition to the case. And I did not, again, I've not studied them. In fact, I'm not even answered any of the people who've emailed me. I normally would answer people, but on property rights cases, I tend to want to do that during the hearing rather than through email. So, I've not responded. I have perused those emails, to the extent. I also had a brief meeting with the applicant, or Mr. Ferris. He and I just spoke briefly about this as well. So, I want to declare that. And second thing, I have a question regarding the recusal of Commissioner Dennis. How does that change our vote requirements? So, it means the four votes, it's still four votes? Is there, in other words, unanimous among remaining members of the bench?
That's my understanding, Commissioner.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty.
I'd also like to disclose that I've received fairly substantial ex parte communications, significant number of emails, also people approaching me in public. I didn't engage conversation and determined to keep an open mind and consideration based on all the facts that are brought to us in this hearing today. So, thank you, Chairman.
Okay. And Commissioner Lopez.
I too have had numerous emails and communication. I met with Greg as well. My husband's cousin lives in the area, and so had that conversation at Thanksgiving. So, I'm throwing that out there as well, just in case that comes up. But I've kept an open mind and I'm looking forward to hearing this. Thank you.
Thank you. And I myself have received probably copies of the same emails from constituents in ex parte communications. And I've also had a meeting with the representative of the applicant and exchanged the information that was given. I made sure that the Planning Commission received a copy of any information that I had received. So, with that, I think we move on or move into it. Ready? Scott, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Scott Wadele from the Planning Department, here to present this item. This item is being presented today because the Citizen Advisory Board and the Planning Commission recommendations are different, because there are protests against the application, and because the applicant has modified their request since it was originally submitted. In terms of the request, the applicant's initial request was to rezone the 133.2-acre subject site from SF20 Single Family Residential to TF3 Two-Family District for 47 acres of it, and MF18 Multifamily Residential District for the remaining acreage. On January 18th, the applicant modified their request. Their updated request is to rezone the entire 133.2-acre site to TF3 Two-Family zoning and to place a protective overlay on the subject site, limiting the density to 300 lots or 600 dwelling units for the TF3-zoned property. The applicant has proposed the overlay would be written so that it would not apply to any parcels within the subject site that are developed with single-family residences. The applicant has indicated it's their intention to develop single-family housing surrounding three sides of the subject site, which are not included, but you can see here on the aerial are shown, and also to develop duplexes in the subject site surrounded by the red here, both the MF18 and TF3 sites. The applicant has also indicated that they intend to request annexation into the City of Wichita. About the property, the subject site, it's located at the northeast corner of 135th Street and 4th Street, or Central Avenue. It is, as stated before, 133.2 acres in size and is currently in use for agricultural use with a single-family house and related outbuildings on the site. The property is surrounded by the City of Wichita on all sides. Please note, though, that Central Avenue or 4th Street is currently in the unincorporated county, these portions of it. In terms of context, quarter sections to the north, south, and east of the subject site are primarily zoned SF5 Single Family Residential and are developed with suburban-scale residential developments. A small portion of the quarter section to the east is zoned MF18 Multifamily Residential and is developed with single-family residences, and an undeveloped one-acre property south of the subject site on the southeast corner of the intersection is zoned GO General Office District. To the west of the subject site is property zoned Planned Unit Development, which is custom zoning, and the owner intends to develop it for residential uses. In terms of review with conformance to plans, the requested zone change is found to be in conformance with the Community Investments Plan, which is the comprehensive plan. In terms of review, on January 5th, the Planning Commission considered this application. Planning Commission recommended approval of the zone change, which was originally applied for by the applicant. The vote for that was 11 to 1 with one abstention. Members of the public spoke in opposition to this application with concerns regarding an increase in traffic, compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods, and the impact of the development on public services. On January 9th, the Citizen Advisory Board for District 3 considered this application. It recommended denial of the request with a 5 to 3 vote. Members of the public spoke in opposition of the application with concerns regarding an increase in traffic compatibility with surrounding neighborhood and impact, again, on public services. On January 18th, the applicant submitted a letter requesting changes to the application, which were previously mentioned in this presentation. Approximately 350 protests have been received for this case. 59 valid protests were located within the protest area. They equaled 31.33% of the protest area and exceed the state 20% threshold. Therefore, any approval will require a supermajority or four or five votes. In terms of the county commission's actions, the recommended action by the MAPC, or the Planning Commission, is to approve the application as recommended by the Planning Commission, and that includes the TF3 and MF18 zoning, to adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and to sign the resolution. And again, this would require a four out of five votes. Alternatives include the following. You can approve the application as requested by the applicant with the modified request, which would rezone the property to TF3 and establish the protective overlay. This would require an override of the MAPC. You would have to make alternative findings and approve signature of the resolution. This also would This also would require a supermajority of four or five votes. Another alternative is that you can deny the application by making alternative findings and override the M A P C recommendation. This requires two-thirds, or four out of five votes. Or as always, you can return the case to the Planning Commission for further consideration with a statement specifying the basis of the failure to approve or deny the application. Again, this would require a simple majority, three out of five votes. So with that, I'll take you through some of the photos and maps that we've got, and then we'll stand for any questions. So this is the application area, the subject site, surrounded in red. You can see it's divided by the line, M F eighteen on the left, T F three on the right. Again, the applicant has modified their request to have the entire thing rezoned to T F three with a protective overlay. Oh, and special note on the protective overlay. Protective overlay, again, would limit the density to which it could be developed, to the three hundred lots or six hundred dwelling units. But I would point out, too, that they have requested that it be written in a way that it would not apply to the properties that are developed, the parcels that are developed with single-family residences. Here's the map of the zoning. You can see S F five, which is surrounding it. You can also see, again, the blue boundary, which is the city limits for the city of Wichita. And then you can see a variety, some pockets of other zoning in the area. This is the map from the comprehensive plan, showing that both employment and residential uses are recommended for the future. This is the protest map. This is zoomed out quite a ways because of the number of protests that were received. This is the protest map that is zoomed in, so you can see the protest area. And again, the percentage of the protest area exceeded twenty percent, so it requires the supermajority for approval. Here are photos from the site and the surrounding area. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, at this point, yes, Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Scott. And thank you for everybody that's here today that's showing interest in this. I have a few questions. I'm going to try to wrap my mind around some of these things. And maybe, Chris, you might be able to help with this. The county, based on what I'm reading, the county has a requirement of a minimum of one acre per structure for wastewater requirements, correct? So I'll finish the thought, and then I'll let you address it all. So if this stayed in the county, the county would not be able to approve a plating permit based on this information. Am I correct in that assumption?
Good morning, Commissioner. For the record, Chris Labrum, M A B C D, and that is basically correct. The at play, the main issue at play is water and sewer service. So assuming city and water service, however, that was to be brought to this parcel, you would be able to develop it as per the plan. If it does not have those public services, then our county sanitary codes, excuse me, would limit it to one-acre minimum lot size.
Okay. So in order for this to move as it's described here, this would require annexation to the city?
Either annexation or an agreement with the city to still have those public services extended.
Is there an annexation application already in?
And that would be more of a question for Scott, but my understanding is no.
Thank you, Chris.
That is correct. I'm not aware of an application being submitted.
So this is where I, I'm the new guy in the room, so I'm going to ask some questions and try to think aloud, if that's okay. But so we're making a decision based on what we, for rezoning into the county, with the assumption, we're making an assumption that an annexation application would be approved, but it's an assumption at this point.
That is correct.
Is this normal for the Board of County Commissions to? Again, I'm the new guy, so I'm trying to work through this.
Sure. There have been a handful of applications that have come through in the last twelve months for this. Two of them were deferred until the application for annexation was processed and approved by the city council. And at that point, it was taken up as a rezoning case in the city of Wichita. Those are the most recent ones that I'm familiar with.
Okay. I'll stand for other comments from my colleagues.
Okay. Thank you. Great questions. Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, this is preliminary questions. Thank you, Chairman. And then I know that there's a lot of people behind me who want to speak as well. But if we did approve this, and they did want to submit a plat, the only way the plat would be approved is if it met the one acre per lot, which, again, still fits under T F three. They can do that if they wanted to. But they want to go with the smaller lot sizes, they would have to get the annexation done out of the way, or have a agreement with Wichita first. So I guess my point is, if this was approved, it doesn't change their options unless they don't get annexation, which means they could still develop this, it just has to be, the plat would be different than what they're describing today. We're only talking about the zoning change today. And again, their plan is for smaller lot sizes, we know what that is, but it's up to them to get the annexation. So again, one of the things that developers have trouble doing is plating, annexation, and zoning are three separate things, and the order that they happen is sometimes different. And so I guess I don't know that I would see the annexation as being an issue today for us. It's only an issue for the developer. If he doesn't get annexation, then he has to plat it differently. That's his problem. So that's my opinion. And someone else can certainly please tell me if I'm wrong on that. I am curious, by looking at that map, what is the, does anybody know what the lot density is of the three areas to the north, east, and south of the subject property? Just looking at that map, it looks like it's pretty dense.
In terms of density, no. But what I can tell you is that they are zoned S F five, single-family, five thousand square feet, so they would have a minimum of five thousand square feet per lot.
Okay. And the T F three would be three thousand square foot per lot?
It depends. It's three thousand square feet for a duplex unit.
Sweet.
Thirty-five hundred for a single-family. So six thousand for a.
So one lot would be six thousand, or?
If you do, yes, if you do a duplex.
Correct, okay. So single-family would be thirty-five hundred square feet if it was a single unit, but a twin home, with the T F, the duplex facility would require six thousand square feet. Okay, that makes sense.
And just to be clear with duplexes, that equals three thousand per dwelling unit.
Right, I understand that. Okay, so yeah, maybe six hundred, okay, six hundred units times three thousand square feet per unit for the lot size, for each half. I get it, okay, thank you. I want to go, just, I'm looking at the golden factors. You said a minute ago, professional staff, M A P C approved it, eleven to one to one, with, that last one was a one abstention. What about planning staff? Did you guys make a professional recommendation to M A P C?
We did. Our recommendation was for approval. And remember, I would just point out, that was for the initial application that was received.
Right, and that included the multifamily dash eighteen?
That's correct.
Would that change the professional staff's opinion by what's being presented today?
No. And the reason why is because it's a lesser intensity to go to T F three.
Did the planning staff have any concerns about the water, sewer, or public services regarding, because that is one of the things I've heard numerous times already in opposition, was concern about public safety services and water and sewer?
We do not. And a lot of that is for the reasons that you've stated, in that in order to do this density of development, they would likely need to get services, they would need to get services from a municipal agency.
Very good. I have no doubt, I'll have more questions a little bit, but that's enough for today, for just a moment. I will stand for the hearing to happen, and we'll see what happens after that. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, I don't see any other questions at this time. For those of you that, this is new, what's customary is we hear then a presentation from the representatives of the applicant or the applicant themselves. So with that, and I believe you were also signed up to speak. This counts as your speaking. Mr. Ferris?
Mr. Chairman, members of the county commission. I am Greg Ferris, and I am representing the applicant on this case. I reside at one forty-four South Bay Country Court, ironically about three-quarters of a mile from this development. I'm going to, before I get into my presentation, I do want to address the issue of annexation. This was a little bit unusual. I think you're right, Mr. Howell. It isn't exactly the normal way. Normally, you annex it or apply for annexation. In this case, it's a farm. And the farmers really don't want to be in the city unless they sell their property. The sale is contingent upon the rezoning application, therefore, it doesn't make sense for them to annex prior to. If this is approved today, they will begin the plating process, and they will begin the annexation process. The goal has always been to be in the city with city water and sewer if it is approved. So the other side of it is, and I think Mr. Howell was entirely correct, is if this is approved today, and it did not get annexed, it could still be T F three, but we would be under the county guidelines and would not be able to have the density. So it would basically be irrelevant that it was approved as far as any issues were concerned. So I don't think that there's anything with the water and sewer, excuse me, that are standing in the way of the approval, because, one, we plan to annex, and I don't see any reason why the city wouldn't accept the annexation. And the second part of it is, if it isn't annexed, then we just fall under your code. So with that, then, I'll go through the presentation briefly. Bridger Development is the company that is doing this. They do different, have a different philosophy in the development of two-family units than the majority of the two-family units we're used to in this community. They own them after they develop them. So they're looking at an upscale development. Now, after we met with the Planning Commission and heard all of their comments, and after I went to the Citizens Advisory Board and I heard different comments, and I've had some individual meetings, we determined that the M F eighteen was a real sticking point to the neighbors. Not that the T F three isn't, but the M F eighteen seemed to be a reasonable sticking point. And the density, they were concerned with the number of people that might impact the schools and some of those things. So that's why we proposed the protective overlay. And since it's more restrictive, we don't believe the Planning Commission would have had any issue approving something that was more restrictive. Oops, sorry, let's go back. Oh, how do I do that? Easy arrows on the cue board. That's all right, let's not worry about it. This, the slide I missed was just the protective overlay. You have that in front of you. Staff has also kind of done that. So this is the parcel in question. And what you can see is, and I think the majority, I think the question was, how dense is that area around the outside? It's, the density of that is probably somewhere around three units per acre. That's pretty standard in the single-family areas in West Wichita. We're proposing in the T F three, two-point-five lots per acre. So while we'll have two units on that, there will be less density than we would be allowed under single-family. If we were to develop that, we could develop three hundred and forty-five lots of single-family. We're actually developing a little bit less than that. As you're well aware, zoning is controlled by the Golden Rules. I don't have to explain what Golden is to you, but just for the audience, the reason they're called the Golden Rules is this was a Supreme Court case that was brought by someone named Golden. And after that, everything that ever has occurred, it's always been called the Golden Rules in zoning. Character of this area is residential. We are not changing that character. We're not doing any commercial, so we believe that that is appropriate. This property has been vacant for a very long time. There is a huge area of floodway through this. Because of that, it limits the size of the developable area, which makes the cost of single-family development a little bit difficult, and it makes it a little easier to market as a two-family area, and that's one of the reasons. You'll hear a lot today about the, why people think this will have a detrimental impact. But because we have made sure that no single-family home will back up to anything but a single-family home, we think we have limited any impact that this might have in a negative way. So we don't believe, because this is residential, because, and you'll see a little bit of the quality of development that they're proposing, in fact, many of the units that we're proposing are as big or nicer than some of the housing in the area, we believe that this will have no negative impact whatsoever. Again, I said, this has been vacant for a very long time. This is in the natural growth path of the city of Wichita. This needs to be developed eventually, otherwise you just have this island that's not. Property immediately to the west was just developed. It includes two-family, so the character of this neighborhood is now two-family and single-family. And it would, the applicants in this case are not the developers, they are part of the application, but they're the owners of the property, and they would sustain a substantial loss if this zoning did not go forward. As the planning director said, it is in conformance with the plans. The impact on facilities, again, I'll go back to the fact that this area has adequate sewer water and streets for this kind of development. We're developing it with just a little more intensity than the single-family that would be allowed, so we don't believe that what would be allowed regularly is going to have a negative impact. Consideration of professional staff, this was overwhelmingly approved at the Planning Commission. Planning staff has recommended approval, and we believe that this does meet the Golden Rules. You will hear today that there's neighborhood opposition. This may be the one item that it doesn't meet the Golden Rules, but in that case, Golden did determine that one factor, especially one factor being neighborhood opposition is not enough to deny a zoning case. So this is not what you normally expect to see when you see duplex zoning. This is some of the renderings of what they have planned in this area. You can see they're upscale, they're nice, they fit into the character and quality of the area. These are what they plan. They're easy access for elderly, for those types of families that, you know, are on the way up, moving up. And so we think that when you look and see, and this is some of the stuff they've done, this is one of their developments in Arkansas. You can see, just pretty similar to what they said they were going to do. And this is another development that they have planned after. So this is not what we think of normally when we think of duplexes. These are really more like condo, two-family homes, but the idea here is that they will own them all. They put a homeowners' association in place that manages them, maintains them. They, the density is very similar to single-family. They mow the grass. If you pick up the phone and call them, they come take care of whatever issues you have. This is different than any other two-family system in the city right now. Some of the concerns were about drainage. That will all be addressed at plating, and believe me, I've been around long enough to know that this particular area is under a microscope, so when this goes through plating, it will be developed very seriously. So, you know, here's a motion that if you would seek today to approve it, that includes the protective overlay. I made a commitment at the cab that I would propose that. I've kept that commitment, that we are removing the M F eighteen, that we're going to restrict the density, and believe that this really can be a first-class development that will have no negative impact. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, Mr. Ferris, thank you, and thanks for showing those pictures, because I, that's one of the things that I had received that I forwarded over to the planning. We didn't have that, so that becomes part of the presentation and the record. So I don't have any questions at this time, and I don't see any, but I.
I'll be, I'll stand by if you have questions later. Thank you.
Reserve the right to do that, okay? So that's the applicant presentation, basically, right?
Actually. Yeah. So I'd like to say a few words to the.
Okay.
Is all questions.
And please state your name and address.
My name's Justin Underwood. I actually live in six thousand New Hope Road, Hackett, Arkansas. I doubt that many of you know where that is. But I'm a partner with Bridger and the senior development person, so I've been doing this, seems like since I was six years old. So I've been doing this for a while. But I just want to, A, I want to commend your city. We first came here about ten years ago, and after the oh-eight fall, and we came back in about twelve or thirteen, and what we do is we raise private equity, and we come in and do these kind of things. And we came to Wichita with about thirty-five million dollars that we were going to buy property with, and we just couldn't find anything. We just, Wichita wasn't on the map, you know, and we couldn't get lending in things we wanted, but we always loved Wichita and saw the potential there, so we continued to come back. And so this gentleman that talked earlier about what you guys have going on, I just want you to know, and I want everybody on this room to know, that Wichita is on the map now. So we go to, so we're in the residential housing business, okay? That's what we do. We're in northwest Arkansas. We're in Bentonville, and Fayetteville, and Rogers, and Oklahoma City, and Springfield, Missouri, and outside of Kansas City. So we're in really good areas. So we're in really good areas, so the reason we're here is because we're trying to strike before other folks do. And what you see when you bring all these jobs in is you see people that are used to living in Dallas, Texas, or Bentonville, Arkansas, or Springfield, Missouri, or all those other places that have upscale places that they can rent and live, okay? So what we found in Wichita was, you guys have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of twin homes or duplexes. But to our surprise, they're all exactly the same. I think there's two, maybe three plans. So there's no variety in what is available for folks. So what we do is we actually develop, build, own, and hold long-term these properties, okay? So we come in, we find a piece of property, we develop it, we build the building. So we're at the beginning and the end, and we hold these things. So we build a nicer product. You guys don't have a product like this in Wichita, okay? It's not here. We'd have no competition. It's one thing we like. We have large lots, we have fenced backyards, we have quality construction, we build upper-end construction, and we, after the fact, we own about six management offices, okay? So we property-manage the property. So it's a lock-and-leave community, okay? So if you live there and you want to go to Hawaii for two weeks, you lock the door, you let us know. If we need to do anything, we check on it. We maintain the whole property. So we maintain all the exterior, all the interior, all the yard, we do it all, okay? We own it, we maintain it, we lease it out, and we take care of it. So since it's long-term investment for us, it's very important that it's done right, and so everybody understands, we usually don't buy 126 acres of land all at once to develop, okay? That will take several years to do, okay? It takes a long time to develop 126 acres. It just happened to be, we liked the location, one family owned it all, they all wanted out at the same time, so we're purchasing the whole thing. So it will take a little time to develop that much property. We're very conscientious of neighbors and what we do. I mean, we're good, we're good neighbors. We do what we say we're going to do, and we build good product, and, you know, we really try to bring values up in our communities because we want people to talk about it, we want people to come live there. Our rents are a little higher, so we have to provide that service in order to get those rents. So, you know, it's, I really feel, so, you know, I don't know how many of these I've done. I've done a bunch of them, and there's always people that are fearful of twin homes or townhomes or those kind of things, and I get that. But when you're in the business like we are every day, so the, from the equity side, so from the hedge funds and New York money and all that, this is the number-one thing that they want to see. They want to see these residential, single-family or dual-home build-to-rent projects is where they're putting their money. And they're putting their money there because there's a need for it. And, you know, we're just, we'd love to be in Wichita, we'd love to, you know, bring, we think there, we've done our homework, we've been doing our homework for years here, and we feel like there's a good need for what we do. And I think it'll be a benefit to you guys. The gentleman talked earlier about availability to rentals. You guys do, you know, when you have something that brings all these folks in, availability to rental is really, really important to have the housing for them. So, you know, we're making a, this total project will be, I don't know if we've done the numbers, what the total capital improvement to the area is, but it's a large one. So, but I want to commend you guys on how you run this meeting. It's probably one of the best I've seen, so you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
You got any questions for me?
We do have a couple.
Okay.
And what, first of all, what's the name of, is this all under one company name, or do you have separate LLCs for each development?
Huh?
Do you have separate LLCs for each development, or?
Yeah, Bridger's a development company, and each subdivision would be under a separate LLC. So this will be an LLC that's all owned there, yeah. And that's mostly for lending purposes because the lender wants to lend to one, yeah.
Okay, so you have a master holding company that is over the LLCs? Okay. Commissioner Howell, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't catch your name, sir. What was your name?
Justin Underwood.
Justin, okay. And you said you've developed a number of these types of developments around, about how many can you speculate?
Um, I've probably done at least 12.
12, okay. And relevant to the one that's most like the one that's being proposed today, can you just spitball a price point for the purchase of one of these half-units?
Yeah, we don't, we typically don't sell them, but I can tell you from tax records, the latest one, we did the tax assessment value on the complete building, it was $565,000.
Okay.
So the half-unit would be, what, 270-ish, 270, 280?
And it's certainly not my business, but you said you don't plan to sell them, because it means they're going to be owned and maintained by a property management company?
Yep, so the Bridger will own them, we will hold them and own them, and then we have a property management company that manages.
And then-
That we own.
Sure. And there is an HOA, you talked about, someone mentioned HOA. I don't know who was it, talk to me, maybe it's been a staff report, but the HOA that I, that we talked about, or someone mentioned to me, was very extensive. It was a very long and detailed, comprehensive HOA. Can you please explain that?
We will enact an HOA, but the HOA is just really protection for the community long-term down the road, because if we have 200 lots and we own 200 lots, we are the HOA, right? So we can change, we can implement an HOA, and so the HOA is really for protection down the road, you know, if we did sell it in 10 years or did those things. And another thing for, that's real important for everybody here to understand, is most of your twin-home communities are owned by, you know, 30 different individuals. The grasses are mowed, the things are different, they're just not maintained in the way that we maintain these things, so, you know, but.
All right, thank you. That's my question for you. Thank you, Chairman.
And another question, Mr. Beatty.
Mr. Underwood, thanks. Thank you, Chairman. Just a quick question, since you're, you'll be the landlord here, you're not, these aren't for resale. Do you have an average rent rate to these units?
So we speculate in today's market would be about $1,850. So you know if this takes a year, we see that going up, so that's another thing, and I'm probably telling, preaching to the choir, but we do a lot of construction, okay? And everybody thinks that the market's going to dip, and housing's going to get cheaper, and it's going to cost less to build, and that is so far from the truth, guys. You're, you know, construction is labor-driven, and as we see labor rates go up, labor rates aren't going to fall. And as long as labor rates are going to, it costs more to cut a tube before. It costs more to build an appliance. It costs more to do all those things. So the labor rates have went up, and they'll continue to go up as inflation goes up. Thus, the price to build a new home goes up, and it just becomes harder to buy homes.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, and Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Chairman. You said you had 12, 16 other properties that you've done similar to this, is that right? And you said, you just threw out a number, if you sold in 10 years, right? How many years have you owned the other properties?
Uh, I currently-
On average?
Yeah, so the first, when I first started doing this, I wasn't doing it for myself, I was doing it for someone else. You know, it's kind of how we start these things. So we started doing, I started doing these for other folks. I personally, me, outside of Bridger, I own three myself, that I've done for myself, that I own and operate. And then we have another one that we are starting construction on, Fort Smith, Arkansas, which is 88 buildings. We have a project in, I'm trying to remember all the projects. We have a project going outside of Kansas City that we're in and develop about the same stage with, and then we have one in Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, that we're moving forward with as well, so.
I will just say a concern that I have, we have other townhomes that have been, people have come in, outside developers have come in and purchased the whole area, and then don't take care of it as well. And so that is, I know that's not something that's going to be happening immediately, but as time progresses, that is a concern that I've heard repeatedly, and I know it's more typically of a city issue because they hear it more than we do, but I just know that that is something that happens.
I will tell you this, from our, so we're new in Wichita on how y'all develop things, but other developers, the engineering company, you know, all the people helping us, these lots are too big. Y'all are nuts making these lots this big. Y'all are crazy building something this nice, it ain't going to work. I'm going to tell you, if this goes through, as quick as we build these, people will rent them. Because you have, you have a need that you don't realize you have, and we've done it, we've seen it, we've seen it happen. That's why we're here, you know? That's why we're not in Dallas, Texas, because they're doing these all over Dallas, Texas, or Fort Worth, or Austin, or those other places. So, and we just shake our head and say, yeah, we know, we know the lots are big, we know we could get 30 more lots on there. We understand that, but it doesn't meet our criteria, right? We don't want these buildings 10 feet apart from each other, you know? We want people to have backyards that they can actually let their dogs go in, or go out and sit on the patio and those kind of things, because at the end of the day, people will pay for it. People will pay for a nice place to live, you know, and that's, and we're moving in, again, this is what we're doing, because we're moving into an environment where people, you know, retire, they don't want to worry about their air conditioner going out, or if they got to get a new roof, and it's just, it's fixed cost. When you can live in a nice property that's taken care of and it's fixed cost, it's just, it just works, so it's a, it's a good product.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Underwood. I don't see any other questions or comments at this time. So we are, we've completed the applicant presentation. I don't see any other questions for the planning and zoning. So now we will enter into the, into the public comment timeframe, and this is a, we've had a few people sign up. Looks like we have one, two, three, four, five people signed up, and as is customary, what we do is, but you'll, I'll call your name, and you come up, name and address, and make your statement, and we limit the public comment to five minutes, but it also, we ask out of respect that we try not to be too repetitive on your statements that might have been previously made, so, because we also recall that we received numerous emails with similar concerns that hopefully we'll hear some good stuff today. So with that, we'll start the public comment. First to sign up was Brian Sharping. Next will be Keith Kirschen, if you're ready. Okay. Good morning, sir.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brian Sharping. I live at 921 North Firefly Street. I'm the HOA President for Deer Glen.
Okay.
Obviously, we're here to talk about the zoning. To start with, the Golden Rules, there's eight, nine of them. I'll hit with number eight, do this little out order. Number eight, we have overwhelming opposition to this. My understanding, the previous record for protest petitions was around 100. He said amateur, hold my beer. We have over 350 protest petitions. The neighborhood doesn't like this. So starting from there, that's why we have a supermajority today. Going over the other Golden Rules, number one, the character of the existing neighborhood. You asked earlier about the neighborhoods and the size of the lots and the neighborhoods around it. In Deer Glen, the smallest lot is 10,000 square feet, quarter-acre lot. Hickory Creek, just to the north, they start at that and go up. Liberty Estates, they start at that and go up. Castle Gate, which is just south of Deer Glen, there are 8,000 to 15,000 square-foot lots, depending on where they're located on their cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac, if you know it's a shaped lot. So quite, quite less dense than what they're proposing. What we're looking at in the surrounding neighborhoods, back when you were four years old, you watched a show called Sesame Street. They had a little thing called, one of these things is not like the other, one of these things does not belong. Three sides of this proposed change. They have homes that are on 10,000 square-foot lots or larger, single-family, spread-out, nice neighborhoods. Here, they want to put in single-family homes, rentals, that doesn't belong. One of these things is not like the other. You knew that when you were in fourth, four years old. They talk about the character of the neighborhood and the density. You had a question there. Per the 2020 census, looking at the city website, the highest population density in the city of Wichita has 4,896 people in this area, which comes out to a population density of 7,567. That's per the Wichita City website. With the proposed 300 units of duplexes, that'd be 600 houses, and an average of 2.3 people per household, which is average for Wichita, that puts us right around 1,500 people. Then when you add homes around the edges, the single-family homes, those, we understand their intention is not to put those as 5,000 square-foot lots, which would be the underlying zoning, but we know what road is paved with good intentions. We don't expect them to do any worse than that. Based on the information we have, assuming 5,000 square-foot lots, which was what it'll be zoned as, that'll be an additional 135 single-family homes. So we're looking at approximately 2,000 people in this quarter-square mile. When you look at the development just to the west that was just recently approved, they're talking about adding up to 4,000, 5,000 people in that area. So in that half-square mile, the zoning area, the zoning request now, and the one that was just approved, we would have the highest population density in the city of Wichita by over a factor of 1.5. When you consider the entire city of Goddard is 5,500 people over 10, over five square miles, this is the city of Goddard being dumped into one-tenth the size of the city. Be the largest, highest population density. My wife works at a school there, in the lunchroom, at a school in the area. She had a little second grader come up and says, they're going to put a city behind my house. Oh, that's cute. But when you think about it, Goddard is 5,500 people, they're wanting to put 6,000 people in one-tenth the area. The high population density doesn't match. When you look at, we've discussed at the different meetings, the traffic. We understand that 135th Street's going to be expanded in 2025 to three lanes. It alleviates that question. We understand that the sewer and the water is going to be there, and the zoning versus the plating and annexation, we understand things go out of order. That's fine. But the question is, does the multifamily dwelling, does the duplexes match the existing character? The character issue also, the developer themselves admit they don't match. Why else would they put a buffer zone of single-family homes to hide their duplexes inside? It doesn't quite make sense. If they thought it matched, they would have avoided that. The last item I want to speak about is rule number seven, the impact to the infrastructure. Currently, Wichita police are understaffed by 60 to 65 officers. That's about 18% understaffed. Currently, from the Big Ditch West, Kellogg North, B199, there's only two police officers on patrol overnight. High-density population leads to a higher incidence of crime. Not to say that people who live in rentals are criminals, what it says is that the per-capita crime rate stays the same, but your capita has gone up. You've packed them into tighter areas. So we don't believe it matches rule number eight either. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Yes, there is a question from Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman. Quick question. You said you're the HOA President for Deer Glen?
Yes.
Is the development just to the south of Deer Glen, the Castle Gate, are those are duplexes, correct?
Those are not duplexes.
Are they? They're not a multifamily?
No, they are not multifamily. They're single-family, pretty much retirement homes.
Okay.
I believe the gentleman who speaks after me is a member of that community.
Understood, okay. Thanks for the clarity.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate your professional approach to us. Also, just a reminder, the clerk here is the one that, did you want to?
It's okay.
The clerk has the timer, so when you hear a beep, or she'll give you a 30-second notice if he gets close to that. And I didn't mean to, Commissioner Howell, did you have a question for the previous speaker?
It's okay.
You want to wait?
I'll ask somebody else. Thank you.
Okay, my apologies. All right. Next up is Keith Kirschen, and John S.H. is next.
Hi, Commissioner, I appreciate the time. I'm Keith Kirschen, who's a good lady, and I do live in Castle Gate, and we are-
You want to state your address for the record, please?
What's that?
State your address for the record.
Yeah, 735 North Thornton, Keith Kirschen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And matter of fact, I don't have a pointer, but if you look to the east, you'll see kind of like a, like a circle where Castle Gate is, or- like a, a hor, like a circle where Castle Gate is, or I could say, if I go straight up here, see that Thornton Street and Firefly? Right there is Castle Gate. And one of the reasons I'm here is because that's really straight to the east. We don't have an HOA yet. It's still under development. So, the north part and the little bit of the east part of that in Thornton is still not developed. There's nobody living there. So, because of that, that would always stay white until, until it's developed. But my, this is my issue. We don't have an HOA yet because it's still under the developer. And we did all that circle, eighty percent of those have petitions. I have them here. I turned them in one day late, and they said, you're one day late. We can't accept it, even though the meeting was moved back a week. So, I wanted to let you know that from this diagram you see, most of that there is gonna be blue as well, from the Castle Gate area. And it is about my age of people, two three-bedroom homes, about, you know, where, which would be kinda what he's talking about there as at, at age, you know, that it's kind of our last stop that we would like to live, you know? So, I just wanted to share that that party's included as well, and that's why I'm here.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Just, sir, before you step away.
Yes, sir.
I, I didn't actually hear a reason why you're, why you're opposed. You, I see the...
Yeah.
See, there are people who are opposed.
Yes.
But you didn't say, you didn't say why you're opposed.
Well, we're opposed, kinda what Brian said, it's the fitting in, because, you know, we're backing up right to that right there. And we just don't, we get the development, the single family home, and that's what we wanted, but, you know, as you get older and stuff, the traffic, and to be honest, we get renting, you know? Versing everything around there is sold property. The rental part's kinda scares us. You don't know what you're gonna get.
So, just for clarification, you, you said your, your petitions were not accepted, but you also said they'd be in the, they'd be in the, they would be blue on that map. They would not be red, correct?
Yes. Well, yes. Yeah, only reason those white, there's some white there, are those houses haven't been built yet.
I understand. And so, they, just be, just to be clear, the red area is the calculated thirty-one point three-three percent, and what you have in your hand would not have changed that calculation, I don't think.
It, it would, that thirty-one probably go to thirty-four.
Again, if you're in the blue, it would not, because it's outside the line.
Okay, so that's only around the red?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Thank you, sir. Next up is John, I think it's Shively. Apologies if I misread your name. And then after that will be Carl Soldator.
I had put myself on the list to speak only if Brian ran out of time.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir. So, John Shively, state your name and address, please.
I'm John Shively. I live at one two nine one three Harvest Lane Court, over in Hickory Creek, which is just to the north of the land up here. So, my question is, are, are more rentals needed in Wichita, in West Wichita? Do additional rentals meet the needs of the community? Wichita's attractiveness is that we have always offered affordable homes compared to other markets. Are we losing our identity here? In my personal experience, younger generations want to buy houses. But the problem is, there are very few options to them, for the, for them right now. There is a shortage of available homes in Wichita. If you go out and look on any given day, on Zillow or online, you can almost count on one hand how many affordable homes, saying the two hundred to three hundred thousand range, are available in West Wichita. And people are fighting over those, bidding up on those. My son had to do that. He had to wait a year and rent an extra year so that they could finally find one that they were able to buy. So, they want the opportunity, these young folks and younger generations and people moving to Wichita, they want to be able to build personal wealth and equity, and live the American dream of, you know, building equity and not paying rent. In fact, I think by focusing on rentals, Wichita is missing an opportunity to attract people from larger markets, where people can't afford houses, quite frankly, can't afford the rent in larger markets. Again, this is something I know personally, I, I have personal experience with my daughter. She wanted to move to Denver, be close to the mountains. She's found out it's too expensive. They want to buy a house, but there's nothing available for them. Their rent is too high. Now, they're looking at other markets, considering Wichita, places like that, that are more attractive for younger people. So, as we're bringing in businesses to Wichita that we talked about earlier, is it more attractive to those businesses to be able to offer their employees, hey, you have a chance here at the, of the American dream, buy an affordable house? In Wichita, that's been our identity for so many years. You see people that move here because they can get a house here that's affordable. They can get more house than they were able to get in the market that they moved from. So, I, I'm just gonna close out. Does this project meet the community, our community needs? Is it beneficial to future generation and local taxpayers? I hear about the, the rental property company is out of, out of state. I don't know all the financial ins and outs of that, but it sounds to me like a bunch of rental money's gonna be leaving the state. As Wichita works to attract businesses and jobs, will the huge influx of rentals attract people to Wichita? Or is our ability to provide them affordable homes more attractive? So, that's basically my statement. I'm open to questions.
Okay. Looks like a question, sir. There was a question for you. Commissioner Howell?
So, again, thank you for testifying this morning, and just trying to take your comments relevant to the golden factors. And you talked about rental situation versus purchasing, which is really not on the list in front of me, but I'm just curious, relevant to the golden factors, which I'm sure you reviewed, what is your, which are, which are greatest opposition to this based on the golden factors?
Does it meet, does it meet the community needs?
You're saying it does not meet the community needs?
Right.
Okay. I have no questions for you, but I do have a question for staff relevant to your testimony. I don't know, probably someone from legal, I'm guessing. Not for you, sir, someone from staff relevant to your testimony. So, you may, you may sit down from, from a personal concern. My question is, are we allowed to consider the rental status versus ownership status of properties relevant to zoning approval?
Kirk Sponcel, Assistant County Counselor. I would initially say that considering essentially the ownership of a properly, of a property does not fall under the golden factors. Expanding a little bit, the golden factors are the general guidelines, and there are certainly times in which you may consider other elements in your considerations, but those should be specifically articulated.
Let me, let me state my question differently. So, there may be people who purchased homes in the past, or maybe they're investors looking for homes that are for sale, and they purchase homes with the intent to make it a rental. And I know there are people probably in this room that have many rentals that they own, and they, they buy them as a, as an investment. Or if someone has an extra home for some reason, maybe they, you know, inherited a home, or whatever, they turned it into a rental. We don't regulate, generally, if someone has a, an SF five home in the community, and they choose to make that a rental, does the government have anything to say about that choice, that, that landowner making a choice to turn that into a rental? That's, that's a, it's a private decision, is it not?
That, that generally goes to owner property rights, and I would verify with county, but I don't believe we have any regulations on long-term rentals.
We don't regulate that.
Yeah. We don't regulate long-term rentals, no.
All right. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you. And, and just to, I have a follow-up comment on Mr. Shively's presentation. I was familiar with the zoning case for, this refers to out-of-town, out-of-city, or out-of-state developers. And we had a zoning case a few years ago at one hundred and twenty-seventh East and Central, and it actually was kinda catty corner from, catty corner from Crestview Country Club, and had some single family homes there. And this group was out of Tulsa. And they presented what they were going, and this was an apartment, three-story apartment complex with a lot of residents, maybe a thousand or something. Anyway, the company was, was properly vetted on their other developments that they had done outside Tulsa and other areas, and, and it proved to be a legitimate project that they wanted to do and had done in the past. And, and now it's, it's been in, it was built about three or four years ago, and it's about full, and, and it looks really well, and it fits in the neighborhood at that time. So, I don't want to discourage out-of-state investors to come to our city based on the fact that we need, we do need housing and, and quote, rooftops. But I would assume that our planning commission and others could properly vet the experience of, of this developer in, in some of the projects they've done. If, if it's a problem, I'm, if, if there's a problem with Google and everything else, it's, it's, you become very aware that there's a problem in developers. And, and there has been problem out-of-state developers, not many, but there's a few. And I think Chris Labram can attest to, to one or two that, that are in the area that, that do struggle, and they have a track record that struggles. So, I'm hopeful that the proper background can happen. And then the other thing, the second of two things I want to just mention is yesterday, up, again, up in Topeka, the Panasonic plant that's going up in DeSoto, four thousand employees and all the challenges they have, part of the, part of the state grant that, the, DeSoto that that plant received was, was upwards of five million dollars in employee out-of-state relocation costs that they can incentivize to, to help attract employees. So, I, I don't know that that's part of the Integra package, but the fact that it's up there in DeSoto. So, we are, as a community, recognizing the challenges of, of, the happiness of our growth, and the challenges of where are they gonna live, and where are they gonna come from. And, and I think we're all laser focused, as Jeff Fleur mentioned, sending out, whatever they call that, direct emails to, I call it another version of geo-fencing, as I'm learning, to, to attract these people. So, I just want to make those comments. It doesn't, doesn't affect my decision one way or another at this point, but it is just some more factual background for everybody. Okay, we have one more speaker, Clint Stevens. Clint?
Yes, good morning. My name is Clint Stevens. I live at one three six zero eight West Hartner in Highland Springs. I'm here as the president of our HOA, not on behalf of the US Air Force, please. And I apologize for my attire.
Thank you for your, sir.
I'm working today.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you, and thank you for your service, commissioners. First off, I'd like to take a little bit of contention with Brian, and the record that you, that we all broke, the three hundred and thirty, the previous record of over one hundred was done by a single HOA on a previous zoning. So, it took six HOAs to break the previous record. So, I prefer Dos Equis, if you choose to get a beer with me after we're done here. All right, on to the business we have at hand. Commissioner Howell, you asked a question earlier on the current dwelling-to-acre ratio, and what is the current construct? I would say that it's probably closer to a two to one, maybe even three to one, as the applicant has suggested, given consideration to most of the lots are a third of an acre, all the way up to five acres in the entire surrounding nine-quarter sections. So, when the developer says that they're gonna come in and produce two and a half to one dwelling-to-acre ratio, which is less than the three to one that he mentioned, it's misleading when you actually look at the land mass that's being developed on compared to the, the rest of the surrounding area that's currently developed. Right now, there are sixteen hundred and fourteen homes in the nine surrounding quarter sections. They, they're bringing in another six hundred based on the three hundred, and then the family size, right? That's just under roughly forty percent additional on top of what is already currently existing. To the rental question, our HOA is currently going through a rental restriction. I know some of the other HOAs already have rental restrictions in place. The larger lots, the higher-end homes that we have in this community, or the surrounding communities, there's a large concern by a majority of the residents, that they are concerned with rental properties to the extent that we're restricting ourselves from being able to rent our own properties, which personally, I'm completely exempt against, because I don't like restricting our ability to with, our properties what we want. However, it's a community vote, and that is what's occurring within our communities. Excuse me, one second. I gotta log back in here. Come on. So, on that, on that point, to Commissioner Lopez, your statement on the developers that produce the larger communities as rental communities, and then turn and then sell them, that is a concern that we have as well. With the fact that we're trying to restrict single-family rentals, when a developer comes in and produces a very large rental community, they're doing that from a business approach. They're trying to maximize their profits on the land, which I'm also a business owner, so I can agree with that. However, whoever purchases that land in the future, and all of these properties in the future, are they going to maintain that large rental community, or are they gonna start to divide it up and sell them individually? And then what is the impact on our community that we're not gonna face over the next ten years with their approach? So, what is that future approach to look like? And then finally, with the golden rules, when I presented at the MAPC, it was a eleven to one vote in opposition, or a vote to approve, with the one dissenting Commissioner Cunningham said, there is enough here in the golden rules for us to deny this if we want to. I took a little concern with that, is because the golden rules are set up to provide you an objective basis to make a decision. An eleven-one vote to approve, when there's enough in the golden ru, rules to disapprove, is a subjective base decision. So, I challenge you all to look at this from an objective standpoint, use the golden rules as their intent and purpose from an objective decision-making point of view. The city advisory board took that approach, where they voted five to three to deny. So, that's my challenge to you all. Look at all the facts, look at it objectively, and make the best decision that you can for our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Stevens? Commissioner Howell?
I always have a question. I'm so sorry. Yeah. No, come on up. No, please. You mentioned that your HOA is looking at, looking at, limiting, looking at limiting rentals. Is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Um, are you, is there any examples out there that, in Kansas, where a HOA currently limits rentals, not short-term rentals, but regular rentals?
Yes, and that is the, the basis of our internal discussions that we've had, and I've reached out to the attorney that we're working with. And yes, there are several in Wichita that restrict renting entirely. So, the way we approached it was that one of our citizens or community members was concerned about the short-term rentals. So, that's where we started our discussion, and then it expanded into rentals entirely. And that's kinda where we're at right now, working with our attorney to draft language for a community vote. And it looks like it's going to be the inclusion of long-term rentals as well, which is personally concerning, however.
I'm not sure our state speaks to that or not. It might end up being a legal question as well, but I understand the issue of short-term, like Airbnb, Airbnb type stuff, which is typically regulated by cities potentially, I think Wichita's just going through that right now. I'll end my question with you, but I may have to ask our legal to, to opine just a little bit with me. You may have, I'm done with you, sir, but thank you. I have a question for our legal staff then.
Sure.
Are, are, is there anything in Kansas law that speaks to the issue of HOAs being able to limit rentals within their HOA? Do you know?
Kirk Sponcel, Assistant County Counselor. I, I have not reviewed the, the situation, and I would be hesitant to opine in detail.
Okay.
When we start getting into these covenants, that's between private parties, and that's outside of our purview.
So, to the extent that the people opt in to the covenants, they can, they can pass all kinds of restrictions, I suppose, on the people that opt in, knowing that the HOA do, does govern those folks that opt in?
That, that basis, if applicable, would be, you, you might be considered a, might be considered grounds for civil claims, but once again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to go into detail further than that. further than that. I apologize.
Okay. That's my end of that question. Thank you again for the answer. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, everybody, that comes to the end of a public comment section, so we will close the public comment and bring the discussion back to the, to the commission. At this point, are there other questions for either the applicant or the staff? And I don't see any. Do we want to review, just for the record, how the voting options would be? Maybe Scott, could you come up here and just, again, just remind not only us, but the public of what the, what the voting motions, if motion A, motion B, motion C?
Okay. So in terms of actions by the Board of County Commissioners, the recommended action that's coming to you is from the planning commission.
Correct.
And that is to approve the application as they recommended it, and that was with the TF3 and the MF18 zoning. So part of that action would be to adopt the findings of the MAPC, which are the golden factors, golden rules, and then to sign the resolution. Of course, this will require a super majority because of the protest petition exceeding the 20% threshold, so four out of five votes. The next alternative, an alternative then, is that you can approve the application as requested by the applicant. That's for the TF3 zoning and establishing the protective overlay. This would require an override of the planning commission. You would have to make alternative findings of the golden factors and then also you would have to approve signing the resolution. This also would require a super majority of four or five votes because it needs to override the protest as well as overriding the MAPC. The third option is to deny the application by again, making alternative findings and overriding the planning commission. This requires a two thirds majority, or in this case with five commissioners, that's four out of five votes. And then number four, fourth option is as always to return the case back to the planning commission for additional consideration with a statement specifying the basis for the failure to approve or deny. And this would require a simple majority, so three out of five. Now, I do want to point out that when we talk about making alternative findings, it's not that you have to go through the list and cite something for every factor. You simply, you speak to the ones that you find support that, your particular motion and that's enough. You don't have to go through all of them.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hal.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make some observations and I'm willing to make a motion if, if other commissioners don't have anything that we didn't want to discuss in addition to what I'm going to bring up. I'd like to just kind of look at some of the, some of the golden factors and some of the process here. Someone said that the MAPC had enough evidence to oppose this, but again, I read the minutes of MAPC and I don't, I didn't see anything that was, sounded like it was justification for opposition. Now that I'm sitting here thinking about this for just a minute, I do see two people in the audience that I'd like to maybe ask them a brief question, if that's okay, Chairman? I see someone from our fire organization. I just have one question for you. We'll just nod yes or no. Is there any concerns that you have regarding, regarding this proposed development? It would be in the county typically, initially be in the county if it's not annexed and once it is annexed, if it does get annexed, it'd be a much more dense development if it's annexed, but if it's not annexed, it'd be one acre lots and less density. Do you have any concerns about what's been discussed today?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Robert Timmons with Fire District One. Sorry, I had a little frog. No, the fire department doesn't have any concern with, to start, it has not been through plating or subdivision, so we have no concept of what this looks like, what the access is, but as, as a general rule, no, we have all kinds of diverse areas in multiple cities and unincorporated areas where we provide fire service. So and it's going to be the same fire trucks that respond to this area, whether it's in the city or the county.
And if it's in the city, they'll have to install fire hydrants and things like that. If it's in the county, then you'd have to access nearby water sources and things like that.
The city would determine the need for that.
Okay, so all my questions for you. Then I'm looking at someone that can answer a question on wastewater. Yes, Kelly Dixon, I think, wanting to have a question for you. So again, if this gets annexed into the city, I guess you represent MAPC on both sides of the fence on this issue of wastewater, I think. But whether this is in the city and annexed and they provide wastewater sanitary sewer service to the area through the city of Wichita or it's not annexed and they end up doing this through larger lots in the unincorporated, is there, do you have a concern either way on that issue?
No, sir.
And if this, if this goes forward, will they have some type of potable water service like a rural water three or Wichita municipal water?
They would have availability probably of Wichita water. Don't know if there's rural water available.
Okay.
And if they go back to one acre lots, there could be the potential for onsite water.
Okay, all right. That's all my questions for you. Thank you. So Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go through some of this in my, if you don't mind, I'd like to just talk this out for just a moment. So most of the, most of the surrounding properties are in fact residential. And if this is not developed as residential, it will be developed at some point. And my question to some of the opponents is, what else do you want? Commercial? I didn't ask anybody that question, but I just, I just think when you talk about residential surrounding this area that's going to be residential, to me, that's a pretty good fit. I think the idea that this is going to be undeveloped forever is just not realistic. People who own property have the constitutional right to do whatever they want with their property if they want to develop it and, and make profit or whatever it is that they want to do, they certainly have a constitutional right to do that. So what's been proposed today is residential. What I was going to ask, one of the, the first proponent, I'm sorry, the first opponent today, which I did not ask, but I think I, I know the answer. Let me just say what my question was. There was a comment, a negative comment that said that if the applicant was so sure that this was a good idea, he would not put the single family dwellings on the outside of this overlay, they would just go with twin homes all the way clear to the edge. I don't think that's, I don't think that should be a negative comment. I think it's a compromise. It's a way that anybody who lives in a single family home around this area, they're only going to see single family homes just like the one they're living in currently. And anybody who perch, anybody who moves into the area is going to be a future resident. They know what they're moving into because it's going to be existing when they move in. So there'd be no questions when they make that choice to, to become a resident of the, of the subject property. But to everybody that's in the surrounding area, all those red, red opponent residences and all the blue, as you drive around this thing, you're not going to see the twin homes because they're, they're interior. So to me, the applicant was actually being quite thoughtful, seems to me, to, to do it this way, and I think that that should not be construed as a negative comment. I have a, I did not ask anybody this question, but all those blue homes, I don't know when the applicant changed their mind, I don't have the date, but I am curious if all those folks that were in opposition to this were under the impression it was going to be apartment complexes, MF18. If that's the, if that's what they understood, I can see potentially why they might be more opposed. But we can go back and ask them all about this proposal. So the opposition is based on basically old outdated planning. It's, it's not necessarily relevant to what's being discussed at this point. I see people saying no.
We've heard a idiot call.
Okay. I'm not sure we can go back and forth, sir. I hate to say this, I'm not the chairman, but I don't know, we're allowed to go back and forth at this point. The public hearing's been closed. I apologize.
You have some questions?
I understand. It would have been nice if someone would have presented the timeline as to when the opposition was, was created, but no one did that. So my understanding right now is that, is that the applicant did change the plan. They're not asking for MF18 today, they're asking for a perimeter of single family with an interior of TF3. And to me, that's, to me, less, again, if I lived nearby, I think I'd be less concerned about that plan than I would be about apartment complexes. So anyway, let me move on. So again, the question is the character of the neighborhood. I think that we're talking residential versus residential. You said one of these things is not like the others. I disagree. I think residential is residential. If it was a mobile home park or if it was, you know, if it was apartment complexes, I think you might be, would have an argument, but single family homes on the perimeter with, with, with the twin homes interior, I don't think that, I would say that's not character of the neighborhood. I don't think it is substantially different. Suitability of the subject property to the uses to which it's been restricted. Again, let me just go back to the same thing I just said a second ago. It's residential. So I don't personally see that that's a solid argument against, against this proposal. And then thirdly, the extent of which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. I guess if it's not, if it's not residential, again, we have no idea what the future holds, but it's going to be something potentially much different. And I think that to settle the question, is that you're going to put residential in a undeveloped piece of property right next to other residential, I think it settles that question forever. I don't think it's detrimental. In fact, I think it, it would give me peace if I lived nearby. I would be questioning what's going to happen. Now you know, it's residential. And to me, that's, that's not detrimental to have this move forward. Length of time is the property has been vacant or currently zoned, it's been that way forever. I think we have undeveloped property all around the county that gets developed. That, that is actually, I think, in favor of the applicant. It is not a negative to the, to the opponents. Health and safety, I don't know that I have a concern about health and safety or traffic for that matter, because if the roads require more, we have to have improvements because of traffic, we improve the roads. We, we are committed to that and everywhere in the entire Sedgwick County, we, we update roads and manage increased road capabilities based on what actually happens. And so the traffic has never been a concern on any really of these types of projects in terms of police and fire response or sanitary sewer water availability. Again, I don't, I don't see there's anything in terms of health and safety, welfare of the, of the community that's going to be detrimental if we don't do this. Comprehensive plan, again, if it's the comprehensive plan, that's called the community investment plan, it does fit and staffed to say that, agree there is quite a bit of opposition, but majority of the opposition is, is outside that red band, the majority of it is, and some of those are a half mile to almost a mile away. And I question, as someone who lives a half mile away from this, do they really understand what they're opposing? And I don't, to me, yes, they signed a form, but it doesn't necessarily mean they understand exactly the details of what's been proposed, been proposed here. So Mr. Chairman, I am ready to make a motion. I'll stand by for other comments, but I'd be making a motion here in just a moment to, to approve this with some change. Thank you.
Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a few comments before we move forward, before we hear your motion. This is a challenging one for a lot of reasons, and I've said this previously in a previous zoning, that on a personal level, I moved to an area where I live on 10 acres because I don't want development around me. So when I see this many protests and people coming and saying, hey, I, I want to protect the environment that I moved into and the atmosphere, I sympathize, I hear that. We're fighting tooth and nail where I live to try to do the same thing. And I hear that and I sympathize with that. The balance between property rights is a challenge and I, and I understand that. So for those that are hearing this spoke and filed protests, I just want you to know that at this bench, those are heard and I sympathize on a very deeply personal level. The challenge is I'm not allowed that subjectivity. I'm not allowed the subjectivity to say that just simply because if I lived there, I wouldn't want it, I wouldn't want this type of development. I'm not allowed that and I, and I'm thankful that we do have a framework. We have guidelines that, that restrict the scope that we're allowed to rule on in these things. I, in this community, we've, we've talked about rentals and housing, you know, we're short, and we might hear from our appraiser later, we're short 25,000 to 50,000 residential units in Sedgwick County. It's a significant shortage. We need rentals, we need, I'm all for homeownership, but we need dwelling units in this community. I hear $1,800 is a rent rate. That's not affordable. It's not an affordable rent rate, but that's not subjective to my purview. That's the property owner's purview on what he establishes is in the market. So I'm going to, I'll listen to the motion and move, but I just wanted to make the comment that, that you're heard, you're certainly heard, and I'm thankful that we do have some, some guidelines that we have to rule within that restrict the framework in which we're allowed to be subjective. But I appreciate all the comments today. I appreciate that you're willing to come to Sedgwick County and develop here and, and appreciate this conversation today. Chairman?
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I too want everybody to know how much I appreciate you guys being here today and, and I hear everything you're saying and emotionally I get where you're at, I truly do. However, my concern that I had mentioned, you know, what, what could potentially happen in 10 years, where would this be, isn't something I can make my mind up today on because we don't know what that is. We just heard from the Greater Wichita Partnership about all these great economic development opportunities that are coming and how many more rooftops we are going to need. So we need additional rooftops today. That's the reality of some situations that we're facing, both owned, both ones that are owned and, and leased. But that need is going to continue to grow as these different projects come into play and that's, you know, that's the reality of the situation that we're facing today and into our future. So again, I appreciate you being here. Thank you so much for being a part of this process and, and I really get your concerns. But I, I think that we have to look at what this project could mean for our area as a total and then the rooftops that are added to, to what, you know, where we're at today and where we're going. So I'll listen to the motion as well, but that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty.
I apologize, Chairman. Thanks for another opportunity to speak. I do want to get this on public record that I, I do not like or appreciate the process of considering things without an application for annexation already in place. I think that, I don't think this is proper, I don't think it's appropriate. I think that we're basing this on an assumption. However, the comment that was made by the representative, that if the annexation application was denied, that you would be held to the scope of the county one acre limitation, that, that is a significant statement and a significant fact and, but I, I don't like that we are dealing with things without an annexation application, that, that this is dependent on a lot of assumptions and, and so I don't appreciate that, I don't like that, and I think it's worthy of conversation moving forward, that these things that come before the BOCC, there should have been an annex application already put in place so we have an idea of exactly what we're dealing with. But the annex application that will be coming, forthcoming, if it doesn't go through, will be held stringently to these one acre limitations and, and that's a significant factor. So thank you, Chairman.
Okay. No other comments? Commissioner Hal.
Thank you, Chairman. I do want to just add one more comment for myself before I make the motion, that is, each one of the commissioners has a citizens advisory board and this cab board for District Three did take a look at this and I did read the minutes, it's in the backup material here, and it was interesting to me that the first vote that they had, again, I don't, I don't know the dates exact relevant to when the applicant changed the plan, but the, the cab board did have a tie vote of four to four. And then with further, further discussion, it was switched to a five to three. So it was close. Four to four was the first vote and it was tied. And planning commission, again, was 11 to one, which is significant. I think that that is a, a pretty large majority of people. If it was, if there was, if there was a lot of reasons to deny this, I think you'd have seen a much closer vote, like a six to five, but it was a 11 to one. We have to be objective and I, and let me just say this, almost every single one of these property rights cases comes to us, there's proponents, there's opponents, and someone's going to lose and someone's going to walk away angry. I, I really like the compromises that come to us in terms of when the opponents and proponents come together and they, they make things less, less offensive to everyone, everyone involved. No one gets exactly everything they want, but there's a compromise that comes forward. That's really the best case that happens. I don't see, there's been a lot of compromise in this particular case other than the applicant itself took out the MF18 and the applicant itself took out, or is advocating for an overlay that creates a single family boundary around this development. So to me, those are, those were good, I think, good things that makes us more pleasing, I think, to, if, again, if I lived in the area, I'd be much happier with, with that plan. Going through the golden factors and listening to everything that's been discussed today so far, I have, I struggle with finding legitimate reasons to oppose this. And I think we have a preponderance of the evidence is we, we have to essentially support constitutional rights of property rights. constitutional rights of property rights until someone provides objective reasons why I can't. So my opinion is, we have no choice but to approve this. But I think that the way this was presented is a much better proposal than what M A P C had when they voted, at least, when they voted 11 to one, it included that split and the property and the MF-18 piece. And so today, I would like to change what M A P C did, and also require a unanimous vote for those that are on the bench still. So if anybody disagrees, you can certainly vote no or make a different motion, that's totally fine. But if we do agree, then this probably is where I think we need to go personally. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners approves a zone change for the subject property from SF-20, single-family, to TF-3, two-family residential with a protective overlay established that would limit the density of the TF-3 zone property to 300 to 600, 300 lots or 600 dwelling units, excluding any parts of the parcel developed as single-family dwelling units. And again, just to be clear, that would be the perimeter of that property, would be single-family dwelling units. Mr. Chairman, that's my motion.
Okay. I'll second that. Any other comments? I don't see any, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. So motion carries. Thank you, everybody. We'll take a second while everybody can depart. Commissioners, while we, while they're going, let's discuss the schedule real quick. We've got a few items. Mr. Clark is important. There's a, there's an off-agenda item that's important, and obviously consent and board of bids. We can continue on. I have to leave, and, well, Commissioner Lopez has to leave now, but she's going to join by.
I'm not leaving, I'm just going to take a new mother's break.
She's going to take a break.
But I'm going to call in, so I can still.
She's going to join by phone. I have to leave at 11:30, so we can continue with these items, with the pro temp running it, or we could recess until like 2 o'clock in the afternoon. At about 11:30, we could recess, if you all wanted to attend the Integra thing. But I'm open to either one, because we, appraiser, how long is the appraiser presentation mark? Forty minutes?
Receive and file.
And that's receive and file, okay. So that automatically kicks me off. What's the desire? Continue on with?
If we have a quorum, I have a homelessness task force at 3:30. If it's receive and file, then I think if we have a quorum, we might.
Continue on.
And a pro temp will be here.
And you want to continue on? Continue on?
I can continue.
And you can call in, okay.
I'm just going to call in, and then I'll be back as soon as I'm done.
Okay. So for the public, we will continue the meeting. Commissioner Lopez will be calling in, and I'm here, I will be departing in about 15 minutes. So maybe we could change, maybe out of respect for Joe, we could do a board of bids, item next.
Chairman, we're having a little bit of trouble hearing you out here, we got a lot of background noise, but let me. Item V, which was our quarterly financial report, will defer to next week. The off-agenda item needs to be heard today, that we had discussed earlier, there's an aging off-agenda item that is time-sensitive, that the commission has to hear today. The executive session that we had planned today could be deferred to next week.
Okay.
Past that, we're open to whatever the commission wants to do, but that's.
Okay. Well, while we're here, Madam Clerk, if it's okay, I would like to do, let's do the off-agenda item first. So I make a motion to request an off-agenda item related to a, it's related to an aging item.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
She's calling in, but not on yet. Go ahead.
Commissioner Lopez.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Commissioner Lopez.
I can just, I'm just letting you know, I'm on and I can hear you.
Right. There's an off-agenda item, motion.
I don't know if I missed something, but I just got.
You are. It's an off-agenda item, motion. They're calling your name for approval for off-agenda item.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, so now we're in the off-agenda item. Let's hear what we have to say.
Good morning, Commissioners in that Graham Department on Aging. I thank you very much for the off-agenda item. This is consideration of a grant application to the Wichita area Metropolitan Planning Organization, W A M P O, for 5310 federal funding administered by the city of Wichita, Wichita Transit, in the amount of $473,331 to serve the older adults, disabled, and general public population in the designated urban communities. This is a two-year grant application with the time period of July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2025. It would provide continued funding for on-demand response transportation for general population rural areas, and especially targeted to older adults and people with disabilities, to services and communities where no other or limited affordable public transportation options exist. This would allow residents to remain in their choice of community within Sedgwick County. Sedgwick County transportation would serve the citizens of the following incorporated and unincorporated communities, in Bel Air, Derby, Furley, Goddard, Hayesville, Kechai, Mays, Mulvane, Park City, Schulte, and Valley Center. The grant application deadline is Tuesday, February 28. Sedgwick County is requesting $291,240 in 5310 Federal Transit Administration grant funds through the designated 5310 recipient, which is Wichita City Transit. The application includes a request for operating funds, contractual third-party transportation purchase, and support of an ADA accessible vehicle. The total required match for this grant is $129,651. And that, so the total amount of the grant is $291,240, cash match of $129,651, anticipated fares, $52,440, for a total, all sources, of $473,331. No additional budget authority is being requested, sufficient budget authority is included in our 2023 adopted budget and will be included in 2024 and '24 as well. So with that, I would request that you approve the submission of the grant application, authorize the acceptance of the grant, authorize the chairman to sign all necessary documents, and authorize the establishment of budget authority until the conclusion of the grant term, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions? Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. I appreciate, appreciate the little bit of briefing. My first question is, why did we just find out about this today? I've never been briefed on it in the past. So how did we get to this point?
There was some challenges in the budgeting and getting all of the information necessary for that. It usually is a very important round for the grant application, and this year, we were struggling due to some staff changes and other issues with communication to get the final budget all lined up. So I do apologize for that.
Normally, you'd go around with a two, two and one or something like that, so we could ask you detailed questions and go through this, and today, we're getting something at the last minute. So I guess, a couple of questions then. We have some significant problems in the rural areas on transporting folks that need medical attention. And yet, if I look at the cities that you've chosen, Goddard, which is pretty close to the city of Wichita, and Schulte, in my district, are the only two that are being considered, and it's the largest landmass in Sedgwick County. So how did we pick these cities?
This funding is targeted based on the metropolitan statistical area and those that fall in the non-urbanized areas. So the funding itself dictates which parts of the community that we're able to serve with these particular transportation funds.
So you're saying that we can't serve residents that are furthest from the services that they need?
There are certain areas, yes, that this funding will not, cannot be used because of the type of funding it is.
But again, I'm looking out for the elderly residents that are in most need of service, that are the furthest away from the services, and you're telling me you're presenting a grant that can't serve any of those people?
Let me bring up Candace to answer that question. Candace Bonnison with the department, and she works in our transportation program.
Good morning, Commissioners. Candace Bonnison with Sedgwick County Department on Aging. The current area that you're referring to, that you may have constituents in, we do have services there. It's under a different F T A funding resource, which is 5311. So this one is the 5310, which only allows us within the urbanized areas jurisdictional-wise, based on F T A's findings because of Wichita sprawl. But we are currently serving all of Sedgwick County as part of a different part of F T A, but we are collaborative with these funding groups to provide services to all of those areas in Sedgwick County outside of the Wichita city limits.
Okay. Well, once there's a motion made, I'll support the motion to approve this, but I hope that we don't get to this position again, or that I find out about it and I get a very brief briefing, and you're wanting us to approve something at the last minute. So I just want to make sure that you understand that this is not the way we do business.
Yes, and I do apologize for that, and we will make sure that we do not have this happen again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? I don't see any, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'd second that.
Okay, motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we're back to the agenda. So I will need to depart, so Commissioner will take over. If the meeting goes on, I can come back, and if it's in time to have the executive session, it depends on what the, how that event goes at Integra.
Well, I appreciate the chance to do this, Chairman. I think it's mostly receive and file and non-controversial consent calendar, so consent agenda, so I think we ought to go and continue. But let's take a break for, what, 10 minutes, 15? We'll come back at 11:35. Thank you. Thank you.
Good job.
Good job. That was going to be my suggestion.
That was going to be my suggestion.
Find out how supply chain issues are affecting the real estate and commercial real estate markets, and they are definitely causing havoc. From 2022, parcel growth ends in Cedric County. From 2022 to 2023, the parcel growth in Cedric County grew from twenty, from two hundred and twenty-seven thousand to one hundred and forty-one to two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one. So that is evidence that economic growth is still happening in the county. That that is good. Let's look at a heat map. Heat maps, which I shared with you yesterday, this is all new parcel growth, 2019 to 2022. As you can see, May's is is quite intense. They have roughly 2,000 new homes that are going to be built there. You've got Goddard, you've got Park City, East Wichita, Northwest Wichita, you've got Derby, and also Southwest Wichita and Hayesville. It's a very interesting map. If you have any other questions on that, please let me know. When you look at the parcels by classification and their percentages, the breakdown is interesting. Residential comprises seventy-nine percent. Agricultural, seven percent. Commercial, six percent. Vacant, three percent. Exempt, three percent. Farmstead, two percent. And then you have not-for-profit, other at less than one percent. Sales activity, all classes. This is an interesting slide in that the yellow line that goes across all those bars is a pre-pandemic average. So when we look at that, for 2022, the sales activity was down by thirteen percent due to high inflation and rising interest rates. However, if you look at that that yellow line, you can see that COVID-19 did not have any real impact on sales in 2020, 2021, or 2022. New construction, all classes, from 2021 to 2022, total new construction permits for all classes increased thirteen point five percent. Residential. Residential property represented about sixty percent of the total assessed value in Cedric County, and it represents about sixty-six percent of the total real property assessed Another heat map. New residential dwellings, 2019 to 2022. As you can see, it's once again quite hot around May's. You've got around Northwest Wichita, Goddard, East Wichita, Northeast, Park City, Bel Air, Kechai, Derby, Hayesville. If you have any questions there, let me know. Residential property sales. Once again, you see that yellow line, the pre-pandemic line, and it is apparent from residential property sales that COVID-19 had no impact on those sales. For 2022, residential sales decreased thirteen point seven percent due to high inflation and rising interest rates. The 2022 residential real estate market was unprecedented from May through mid-August. It simply walked away from us. In a very hot market, demand exceeded supply for homes and values and prices, they went New dwelling construction. New dwelling construction is based on building permits that we receive from MABCD and municipalities. This does not measure the actual dwellings that are started or completed. It is just the number of permits. From 2021 to 2022, new dwelling permits increased by twenty-five point two percent. It is important to note that it will take a significant period of time to address the supply and demand imbalance in the residential market. Residential inventory. To have a normal market in residential as far as supply, month's supply, it takes four to six months. That is what a normal market is. At the beginning of January 2022, the supply of residential inventory was approximately three-quarters of a month. Now, this is only for Cedric County, and you can see the legend down below. And for 2022, looking at that graph, it is the purple line down at the bottom. It does float up at towards the end of the year, but nonetheless, we are very low. Looking at month's supply, large county comparison. Once again, looking at the legend, the darkest line there is going to be Sedgwick. The red line up top at four, that is the bottom of a normal market. You can't even see the top of the normal market at six. That's how low we are. Shawnee is the lowest, Sedgwick is in the middle. High inflation and interest rates impacted the sales activity. Residential inventory, median days on the market. This one here pertains only to Cedric County. The legend, as you can see, the purple line is for 2022, and it goes from 2017 through 2022. In January 2022, Cedric County median days on the market was six days. In May, it got to four, and then by the end of the year, we were standing at nine days. High inflation and interest rates did have an impact. It can be easily seen that the market, from when you look out at at sale prices and also, which you will see soon, values, the market is still very active and prices are resilient. Median days on the market. Large county comparison. The dark line is Cedric County. The yellow line at the bottom is Shawnee County. Shawnee's the lowest, and we're slightly above Shawnee. And if you look at Douglas, Douglas, that there, that's always a wild line. There's a KU effect there, but once again, you have rising inflation and interest rates that are impacting as well. Median sale price, this here is going to be for existing and new. And it's for all residential property. The 2022 median sale price for all residential property increased from two thousand and three, excuse me, two hundred and three thousand to two hundred and twenty-five thousand or ten point eight percent. And the median price for a new residential home in 2022 was three hundred and fifty-three Residential median sale prices, and this is for large county comparison. Now, this is, this is pretty interesting. Shawnee is the lowest at one hundred and seventy-five thousand. Wyandotte is next at two hundred thousand. Sedgwick is in the middle at two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Douglas is next at two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Johnson is the highest county at four hundred and ten thousand, and the national average is four hundred and fifteen thousand. That's, that's pretty interesting. Commercial. Commercial property represent, represents about twenty-nine percent of the total assessed value in Cedric County. It represents thirty-one percent of the total real property assessed valuation. Heat map. New commercial buildings, 2019 to 2022. As you can see, there is a lot of activity out there. Wichita has all kinds of activity. You have Goddard, there's May's in the Northeast, and then you've got around Park City, Bel Air and Kechai, you've got some in Derby and Hayesville. If you have questions on that, please let me know. Commercial sale, property sales. Commercial property sales decreased by two point nine percent due to high inflation and rising interest rates, yet commercial sale prices remained high. Commercial building act permit activity. Commercial building permit activity remains steady. There was not a sizable increase in commercial building permit activity because developers and business owners are being cautious during this economic time of high inflation, rising interest rates, and continued supply chain issues. And here comes a very interesting slide. The 2022 preliminary mid-year sales ratio study. This is a study that is performed by PVD, and as you can see, the market was very, very active. It drove down those ratios, and the compliance standard is ninety to one-ten. In residential, we're at seventy-six point six, and in commercial, we're at sixty-nine point one. And the two numbers that you see below each of those numbers are the confidence intervals. Now, when you look at the residential ratio study, you can see that the median ratio, we have been able to use the mission, the median ratio without the use of confidence intervals to be in compliance. The residential market simply was very, very hot, very active, and with easy money, I mean, it it was very, very easy to, the market just ran away from us. It's unprecedented in May through mid-August for our real estate market to be that active. Commercial. Commercial is a different story. It's a very tough market. There are laws that impact commercial that don't necessarily impact residential, and it makes it even more difficult to be in compliance here. Nonetheless, we have been able to stay in compliance and using the upper confidence interval. PVD, the legislature, and the courts all recognize that as valid and as being in compliance. The commercial real estate market, once again, is tough. Foreign investors will pay outrageous prices for commercial real estate. Capital preservation, if they can get a decent yield, that's great, but they want to preserve that capital. Local investors, they feel like they have to follow that. They jump on as well. Also, a a factor in that will be the multi-parcel situation. PVD has fits trying to do a ratio study on commercial when it comes to having multi-parcel situation. That is something that we continue to wrestle with, but we are working to try to correct. Commercial has had to use the high confidence interval to stay in compliance. In 2017 was the last year commercial was able to use the actual median to be in compliance. Agricultural. Now, this here is a very interesting slide. We have been designated as an urban county. However, sixty-seven point five percent of the land in Cedric County is still devoted to agricultural use, and agricultural property represented less than one percent of the total assessed value. People wonder how ag use values or agricultural ag use values are are calculated and so forth. That is the job of property valuation. They have a formula. They work very closely with K-State Agricultural Department and with their statistical department, and they are continuously getting new information in so they can crunch those numbers and make sure that they can get those as accurate as possible. This is what so many people usually wait for. Twenty twenty-three valuation summary. Residential parcels. Nineteen percent will experience a no change in value. Eighty percent will experience an increase in value, and the typical change will be ten percent. One percent will decrease in value, and the typical change will be seventeen percent. Commercial parcels. Forty-two percent will experience a no change in value. Fifty-two percent will experience a change in value, typical change, seven percent. Six percent will experience a decrease in value, typical change, seven percent. Agricultural parcels. Nineteen percent will experience a no change in value. Twenty-two percent will experience an increase in value with a typical change of nine point five. The reason why you have that increase there, and that is going to be on tame and native grasses, is because out west, you have a severe, a severe dry, excuse me, a severe drought which has basically increased the prices of pasture land, hay, and other sources of feed. Fifty-nine percent will decrease in value, a typical change of ten percent. And the reason for that, it will be on 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 parcels that have dry crop and irrigated crop. The decrease is because in past years, we've had higher commodity prices. PVD uses the eight-year moving average. Those are moving off of that eight-year moving average, and more recent, lower commodity price years are becoming more prevalent in that calculation. So we should continue to see some sort of decrease there in in those ag parcels. Then, I've presented this before, the valuation summary, residential, commercial, and agricultural. People tend to think this is useful information, and we've included again this year, and so there's ten years of data there. Has the tax year, percentage of parcels with no change in value, percentage of parcels with an increase in value, the median percent change for an increase, the percentage of parcels with a decrease in value, and the median percent change for a decrease. If you would, please look through that and let me know if you have any questions. I'll be glad, excuse me, to help in any way that I can. Mailing of value notices, and this will be real property value notices. The Cedric County Appraiser's Office will only mail value notices to property owners that experience a change in appraised value or classification from twenty-two, from 2022. Approximately one hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred real property value notices will be mailed for twenty-three, which is about seventy-nine percent of all properties in Cedric County. That is a smaller amount than it was last year. However, the percentage increase in valuation is higher. Assessing value notices if your value or classification did not change. Not everyone is going to get a value, a valuation notice in the mail. So beginning March first, property owners can go online at www.cedriccounty.org, and they can print off, they can view and print off their valuation notice, which will include instructions on how to file an appeal. There's also all kinds of other appraisal information on their properties on that website. I encourage them to to use that information. The appeal process. If property owners don't think that their values reflect fair market value or would like an explanation on how their valuation was determined, they can fill out the back of the value notice, return it to the Cedric County Appraiser's Office within thirty days, and that thirty-day date is on, the the date of mailing is on the front of the valuation notice. So within thirty days of that date, you want to get that back to the county appraiser's office. Appeal meetings begin March sixteenth, 2023, and will be conducted via telephone. Uniform and equal. Now, this here is one that PVD likes us to to read and make sure that it is stated. Uniform and equal. Please remember, the county appraiser is required by law to value property in a uniform and equal manner, and should not be considered an adversary. Increases or decreases in property values do not change the amount of tax dollars needed for local services. And so we added three basic equations there. How is my assessed value calculated? The appraised value, that is what the county appraiser's office does. Times the assessment rate equals the assessed value. How do I calculate my mill levy? Well, the budget needed, and the clerk is the one who calculates the the mill levy. Mill levy is calculated, budget needed divided by assessed value. How are my taxes calculated? A set basic formula there is assessed value times the mill levy. Basic information, but very important information. Let's talk for just a minute on personal property. Personal property represents about three point five percent of the total assessed value. Personal property renditions are due back March fifteenth to avoid penalty. Property valuation notices will be mailed to property owners on April nineteenth. The deadline to file an appeal for personal property is May sixteenth. Now, if you look at the chart, you look at 2023, and you say, wow, you had fewer personal property accounts than you did in 2022. That is not an accurate number, and I'll explain why. Because the state of Kansas went through multiple conversions of their software and didn't get a discovery list like boat list to us from wildlife and parks, heavy trucks list from the Department of Motor Vehicles. And so we use that discovery list. We we can look through there. Have we got this on the roll? No, we put it on the roll. And so we're working through that list, so through the calendar year of 2023, you will see that grow, and you will have a larger number when it comes to certification time. Once again, personal property. Some of those number, the numbers in 2023 will be skewed by the statement I just made. Nonetheless, the historical data is correct, and it's very interesting to take a look at. If you have any questions there, let me know. Customer service. Customer service is very important to the county appraiser's office and to Cedric County as a whole. So if you have questions about your value, you need a value notice, you need the sales and values in your neighborhood, go to the Information and Assistance Group at the County Appraiser's Office. That is on the fifth floor of the Ronald Reagan Building, 271 West Third Street, Suite Suite 501, or you can go to www.cedriccounty.org. You can get appeal information, real property values, real property sales information, property record cards, comp sheets. We we do all kinds of things on that website, and we want to be helpful to citizens. There is another important thing that needs to be said, and that is, when you go to the website, do not, and 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 if you see that you have to pay for something, you're on the wrong website, because there are websites out there that ghost the Cedric County website, and our information is free. Do not pay for it. And if you see something like that, please report it. That would be very much appreciated. Finally, I would like to thank my staff. They're hardworking, they're very talented, we've got lots of new people, we've got people in new positions, they're learning a lot, and I think that this is going to be one of the best times that that our office has had in a long time. We've worked hard, we need a lot of stuff, we need more people, we need more compensation, but I think that we are going to be okay. It's been a rough haul, but we we we've made it so far. We're going to continue to work hard. I want to thank the commissioners for your time today, and I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Well, Appraiser Mark Clark, thank you for the presentation, and I just want to ask one clarifying question. Go back two slides on Slide thirty-six. You said April twenty, you said April nineteenth, and then the slide says April twenty-ninth on the.
I'm sorry, but personal property valuation notices will be mailed April twenty-ninth.
Okay, okay. I.
My apologies.
No, no problem. You're human, and it's just a simple mistake there. I'm sure there are questions and comments. I'm going to recognize Commissioner Dennis to start.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And thanks, Mark, for the discussion, because this is something that we can tell instantly when the property valuations are mailed out, because the next day, our inbox blows up. So a couple of things that I want to clarify, and this is really not a question for you, but I want to make sure that the public knows that we don't tell Mark Clark or anyone in the in the Appraiser's Office what we need for a budget. There are, everything that they do is governed by statute, and we can use that funding, but we don't have to, because your taxes, the public's taxes, are based on two things. One, the assessed value, and again, we have no control whatsoever of the assessed value. But the second thing that it's based on is the mill levy that we put in that's based on what our budget is in order to meet the budget that we're going to pass. So you multiply those two things together, and you can find out what your property taxes are going to be. So yes, this commission does have control over one portion of what the property taxes are, but not the entire formula. As as we move forward, one other slide I got thinking about as you were going through the the slides, is you compared us with other large counties in a number of areas. But one of the areas that I'd be interested in seeing, a comparison of, is the mill levy that each of those other counties charge, because I believe our mill levy is among the lowest. I think we're about second lowest in the entire state of Kansas.
That's correct.
And I want the public to know that we are diligently working, trying to keep that mill levy as low as possible, to keep their their taxes as low as possible. So I I know that we're going to get emails the day after the, to send the property valuation notices out. If there are questions, they do need to go to the Appraiser's Office. They do a great job of of working through the appeals process, and it's not an adversarial process as they're moving forward. I want to make sure that the public knows that this is a service provided by our appraisers. I do have one question, though.
Yes, sir.
And that's, it's on the slide with the sales ratio study. It shows that residential is seventy-six point six and commercial is sixty-nine point one, but our compliance ratio are between ninety and one-ten percent.
Right.
What is the impact going to be from the state, once that they see that our compliance ratio is is below what they're required us to be? Because what it looks like to me is, in the future, there's probably going to be even higher raises if we're going to try and get within the compliance ratio. Right now, the people are going to be complaining about their increase in taxes, but actually with us being so low on compliance, it's lower than it would it would have been. So what's the impact going to be from the state, and what's the impact going to be in future assessments?
Well, I can tell you that the economy, you know, everybody says we're going to be in recession. We may be, but I don't see things going negative here. I think things are going to remain positive. They may be at a lower level, but the bottom line is, you'll still probably see some some increase there. In talking to the director, he knows that county appraisers, especially ones in large counties, are under the gun. We we, this market has has beat us to no, no end. It has been a a rough time. I've talked to him. I know that the Johnson County Appraiser has talked to him. We know there will be increases in the future, but we're not sure what exactly what they look like, because there's going to be economic factors involved and so forth. Nonetheless, I can tell you that compliance makes up, scores a hundred points. We usually are very high in the nineties. This time, it's going to 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 be, to hurt. Do I think I can get, along with my staff, get us into compliance? As far as the statistical compliance portion, I believe we can. People say, no, I don't think you can. The director, he, he hasn't said, no, you can't. And I would just say that when you look, and I have also, I don't want to use the word complain, but I have had certain conversations with PVD, that their ratio study, the way it is done, is somewhat unfair to large counties. I'll just give you an example. If you go back to that ratio study page and you look at the sampling, residential is done by sampling by PVD. Our IWO audit says that we need to do ratio studies in-house, and we do, and we run full file. This here is, you know, two hundred and fifteen sales out of twelve thousand. This here is, you know, 215 sales out of 12,000. I disagree with doing that way. If you have a representative sample, it should be about 10%. And it's not. And if you look at where most of the sales appear to come from, it comes in that unprecedented time that I was talking about, May through mid-August. It doesn't take anything after that point when sales actually were starting to be impacted by higher interest rates and higher inflation. So we have ran our ratio studies in-house. And I'm just going to, I prepared something here, and basically the PVD ratio study is done by sampling on residential of sales and uses the mid-part of the year. That's how they did that this year, and I think it is pretty unfair how they did that. Internally, we run a full-file ratio study as suggested by our IWA audit, and we're closer to 80%. We say, Mark, it says 90, and you say it's close to 80. Understand, there are things that we can do in-house, working with PVD. Remember, it's a sales ratio study. We can appeal the sales that they are using, and we plan to do that. We're researching that. We will get back with PVD. There is a formal process for doing that, and I believe that that will make a difference. Also, when it comes to my office, we've had significant turnover during 2022, and there are requirements that my staff be competent. Competent is a very important word. It is in U.S.PAP. It is in the PVD Director's directives and so forth. And if you're not competent in certain activities, you should not be involved in those activities. So there are requirements that my staff be competent to do sales validation, and that there would help with the sales investigation, final review, that setting values and appeals. Those are major processes. We have a 61% turnover. We're working hard to get people trained, but it takes time. The decision was made to keep the increase manageable to a staff so staff would not be engaged in activities they were not competent to do. I do not want to set a property owner down or have a property owner talk with somebody on the telephone that is not competent to do that. Our initial analysis showed an increase of 13.5% would be needed to achieve the goal of targeting the 95% sales ratio for 2023. And you say, well, Mark, look at that graph, and you say 13.5. I'm telling you, that sales ratio from PVD is a problem, and I'm not going to let it go.
Okay, thank you, Mark. One last point. I want to clarify something I said earlier where Sedgwick County, I believe, is the second lowest on mill levy. I'm talking about the county portion of the mill levy, not the total mill levy that they pay. We have, believe it or not, here in the state of Kansas, I believe in Sedgwick County, over 120 taxing authorities, just here in Sedgwick County. 120, that's just amazing. But when you start thinking about all the cities, townships, cemetery districts, water districts, everything that we have here in Sedgwick County. So when they get their property tax bill, look at what each of those entities is charging. And Sedgwick County is just a little over 29 mills of their entire budget. They're going to find school districts are probably the highest that they're going to be paying for each of their property tax bills. When they get their bill, it comes from Sedgwick County. The appraiser works for Sedgwick County. I just want the public to know that Sedgwick County isn't responsible for everything in their bill.
That's true.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I will get that large county comparison for you.
Those are great comments, Commissioner Dennis. Thank you for that. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Beatty, go ahead.
Thanks, sir. Mark, thanks for coming. Thanks for the presentation, and thanks to your staff. You had made a comment about, on the sales ratio study for commercial classifications, about the challenges with multi-parcels. Could you add some clarity to that and shine some light on what those challenges are and how they really impact you?
Well, I mean, if you have a lot and it has a parcel and it has five lots, in the past, it has been separated out by five parcels. And when you're trying to appraise a building and it's stretched across five parcels, that's a difficult challenge because every one of those parcels is going to get a value notice. It's going to get a tax statement, et cetera. So we have put together programs outside of our CAMA system, which PVD doesn't appreciate too much because the state controls the Orion system. But we have a very nice program called an economic summary, economic unit summary. And basically, it takes all of that information from those parcels and all the information on the improvements, puts it together. It allows an appraiser to make a good informative decision on valuation. They also use that in appeal meetings and so forth. It's very useful. You can use it also at the BOTA level. It provides good evidence. But nonetheless, it is difficult to maintain that. It is an old piece of software that is coming to its end of life, and we're trying to find other solutions. But this is a very difficult situation to handle because PVD software, when they do a ratio study, they don't get it. I mean, this is not the way you're supposed to do your mapping standard. I mean, I hear it all the time. You're not supposed to have this outside of the CAMA system. Nonetheless, they see our predicament, and they allow it. But it creates havoc in the system. When you have somebody who's appealing a property, and they say you have five parcels, and they only appeal one parcel, that creates a big legal issue. It's a never-ending issue. And when we go back to the sales ratio study, I mean, PVD software looks at that and says, oh, well, here's one or two parcels, but the other three, they don't even have on there. So we have to go back to the ratio study and add up all the other parcels, and you can bet we'll appeal those. That will begin to make a difference there.
That helps. I appreciate the clarification. I think the end goal is to make sure that the taxpayer trusts the process so we're getting accurate information.
Yes.
I could see how the multi-parcels creates a challenge. You found a workaround. I just think it's important that our constituents realize that the workaround is an effective workaround, and they're getting reliable data.
Thank you, yes.
Other questions from commissioners? I have a couple of questions myself. I always ask this every year because I want to just be on the record. Who do you actually, we pay your paycheck and your staff, but who do you actually work for?
I work for the Director of Property Evaluation, who is a division of Cador, Kansas Department of Revenue.
And it would be, confirm or deny, would it be unethical for the county commission to tell you how to do your job?
It is.
Correct. So I want to just, for the record, make sure that's understood by everyone. I am interested in a couple of things. Again, I understand what you're saying about the sales ratio study may be flawed because of the low sample and because of when it was taken. But when someone sells a property, isn't there a notification that goes to the appraiser's office that says a property was sold, and here was the sales price of that property?
Yes. Actually, that is filed with the Register of Deeds. It flows electronically through to the county clerk and the county appraiser.
You get that for every sale?
We do not get that for every sale because there are certain exemptions where we don't get those. I would like to visit sometime in the future and see if we couldn't correct some of that.
Yeah. So in terms of residential, do you get all of those?
We get, I would say that we get the vast bulk of it.
So you get, like, the majority of those are, in fact, you have, someone, the deeds or the appraiser has records of those sales?
Yes.
I guess I'm just curious why we don't have our own analysis. I understand PVD does their analysis, and maybe it's flawed. But do we not have our own analysis based on the data? Do we do have on our fingertips? Do we not?
We do. We do because we have been doing ratio studies in-house for many years. However, the ratio, the IWA audit said that we needed to do more and to be more thorough in our ratio studies and to look at differing things in those studies, and we have started doing that.
Just to make sure I didn't miss it, was that data presented to us today in the PowerPoint? We don't have the internal study data, do we?
It is not in this PowerPoint. I can get that to you.
Okay, I'd like to get that if you don't mind. And also, similar to, you had a slide that showed multi-year, I think it was on Slide 29, I believe, that showed multi-year data. I'm curious, if you have that similar type of historical data on sales ratio study, both PVD calculated as well as internal calculated for multi-years, it'd be great to see, because I'll just say anecdotal statement here, but all the years I've been here, this is my start, I'm starting my ninth year here, we've always been, we've been close to that 90% number in the past, but we've always been below. And I always, my simple explanation is, here's the dial. You've got to dial that in a little bit and say, PVD says you're out of compliance. Dial it in a bit. So you maybe put some factor into the formulas. I don't know how you do it exactly, but it's very intentional that we're undervaluing property a little bit, therefore, there's an intentional correction that's made in the math model somewhere that says we're going to dial it up a bit to get closer to that lower, that lower threshold, that 90%. I know you even say in the slides here, we target 95%, but we've been below 90% most of the time I've been a commissioner. And then, of course, today, the data is presented, we're at 76%, which is drastically lower. So again, if you were, if we were to follow that process I just described, it'd be a really big correction, and people would probably be really upset. And as you said, you probably don't have the staff to deal with all those appeals that would happen if that was to happen today.
That is true.
But I do, so I guess my question is this. If you have the internal and external sales ratio study calculations going back a number of years, kind of like that Slide 29, that'd be really awesome. I'd like to chart that out.
We'll see what we can do for you.
That'd be great. Thank you for that. Couple of other things. Do we also have access to other counties' sales ratio studies? Can we look at the other counties and see how they're doing compared to?
Yes. And I can also tell you that I believe it was in either November or December, David Harper presented to the, both the House and the Senate Assessment and Taxation Committees. And he had a list, it was an entire list, every county in the state. And that went, I think, for at least five to 10 years of who was in compliance and who was not. I can get that to you as well.
All right, very good. And I guess the other thing I'd ask is a comparison to other counties would be, it'd be nice to know, relevant to the number of parcels, how many appeals do they have filed? And how many do they, how many do they actually have to process relevant to what we do here? It'd be nice to have that data if it's available.
We can get that.
Okay. And then finally, you mentioned that if you do make an appeal, it's an informal appeal over the telephone. It's on Slide 34. Is that a new thing that we did since the COVID pandemic? We've always done it that way?
No, that is new, but I can tell you that many property owners have welcomed that and like it. It isn't an absolute necessity that it be handled that way. However, it is more efficient.
If they want to do it in-person interviews, is that something they can still ask for?
They can ask for that.
Okay, and it's informal? And if they don't, if they're not happy with the results of that, then they can appeal it to a more formal setting?
Yes. And if you're a residential property and you're going to the next level, that was going to be the Small Claims Division of the BOTA, Board of Tax Appeals. And those hearings are typically held locally.
Okay, so they'll come, they'll bring a representative down to the central county area and do that locally. That's good to know that. And then I'll just say, this is more of a comment, and you're welcome to comment as well. But when people are considering whether or not they want to appeal their appraisal, which again is calculated into a assessed value, if they're thinking about whether they want to make that appeal or not, I would personally not look at the percent of change from previous year. I would be looking at the current value, whatever that happens to be, relevant to what I think it would sell for on the fair and free market of real estate markets. And so if I think a house is worth around, say, I think I would sell it for $200,000, and they say it's worth $160,000, but it was a 15% increase, it may not be very reasonable to appeal that in my situation I just described. If you think it's sold for $200,000, and they say it's worth $240,000, well, now you probably have reason to make an appeal. Can you comment on that?
Yes. People look at percentages and they say, wow, look at that percentage. And it turns out to be not so bad. And there's others that do basically what you just did and said, you know, I don't think I could sell my property for this. There's others that you talk to and say, well, I think I could sell my property, and I'm not going to appeal. And there's other people that will file for an appeal. They just want to know how their value was determined. And they'll say, well, you know, I looked at this, and I think, you know, you kind of got it right, but I still want to know how you did it.
So anyway, just the thought process for anybody listening is, the percentage change from last year to this year, my personal explanation or opinion is that's less important than what is the current value today on the new notification coming out, relevant to what you think you would sell your property for. And if it's, if you think you would sell it for less than what the appraiser thinks it's worth, then you probably have a basis for an appeal that might make some sense. But if it's the other way around, or they've undervalued a property relevant to what you think you would sell it for, it's pretty unlikely that it would be successful in getting a change in that assessment or appraised value. That's just me talking. And then...
But they're good points.
Yeah, I think it's a good point as well. And I think Commissioner Dennis made a really good point. Let me just reiterate, you know, Johnson County, Johnson County government, their government budget is about $1.6 billion. They have 120,000 more people than we have here in Sedgwick County, but $1.6 billion, almost, it's over three times as much in their budget than what we have here. They only have about 20% more people, but a three times as much budget. And guess what? Their assessed value for their jurisdiction is so large, their mill levy is only down about 17 mills. So I know this is wishful thinking. I'll just say, for me personally, I would really like to see our values within that band, that not plus or minus 90, or plus or minus 10% of correct number. I know we're trying to get there, but to me, that is a great goal. And I would love to see us lower the mill levy to get the dollars we need to run government. But what I don't like is seeing deflated values and then have arbitrarily high mill levy to give us the dollars we need to govern government. So again, those two numbers times each other equals dollars. We pass the budget that's in dollars. We calculate a mill levy that delivers those dollars based on assessed value of the jurisdiction. The problem I see is when our assessed value is arbitrarily low, I don't mean arbitrary in a negative way to you personally, but it is lower than it probably should be. If we were within that 10, plus or minus 10% band, we would have a higher assessed value for the jurisdiction, which means the dollars that we need to run government would calculate to a lower mill levy. And I think that's a point that's hard to, for people to understand how that all works. But at the end of the day, I think we would like to be, I would like to be like Johnson County in regards to the assessed value. If it's in that band, our mill levy can be much lower. We would probably, I think right now, we're number three. I just checked the other day, and we're number three in the state. I'd like to be number two, and we would get there if that happened. So that's my comments. Any other comments from commissioners?
Motion to receive and file.
Have a motion to receive and file. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other, any other discussion? All right, seen none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Lopez? Commissioner Dennis? Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye. And then I'd like to make a motion. We would defer item Victor, I believe it is, that is our finance report. Okay. Motion to defer Victor was made and seconded by Commissioner Dennis. Any discussion there? We'll probably defer this to the next meeting, I assume. So with that, Madam Clerk, please call the motion to defer item Victor.
Commissioner Lopez? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye. And with that, we have next, Madam Clerk, next item. I guess it's consent, yeah. Consent, Kelly. We have X-ray through Alpha Lima AL. So manager?
Commissioners, Tim Kaufman, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of items X through AL.
Okay. Commissioners, are there any questions? Anything you want to pull off or discuss before we vote on items X-ray through AL? Need a motion then?
Second.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda and seconded by Commissioner Dennis. And no other comments or questions? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Lopez? Commissioner Dennis? Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye. And with that, Madam Clerk, next item.
Legislative issues?
All right. Legislative issues.
Commissioners, I'm happy to speak on legislative issues, but I know that you have an event that you're trying to get out for, so I'm happy to email those updates.
Very good. I will also be silent. I'll just say that a lot of us have been engaged in legislative issues this year, and I would have a report, but I'll just hold that until next week. So that's fine. Any other commissioners on legislative issues? All right, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Committee reports.
Commissioners, anything for committee reports? All right, not seen anything there. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Anything for other commissioners?
I was going to speak on other, but we're out of time.
Okay.
I'd have something I'll try and cover next time.
All right, we'll just do that next time. And we are going to not have an executive session today, although there was one scheduled. We're not going to do that today. So with that, we will defer that as well. I don't think we need a motion for that. Anything else become before the commission, before we adjourn? All right, seen none. We are adjourned. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thanks, John.